Board of Trustees Planning Meeting, Town of Hennessy, February 5th. Roll call, please.
Richard.
Here.
What?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Here. Item 2, introduction of the moderator, Tiffany.
I'd like to welcome Vicki with NODA. She's going to be our moderator today. So I'm going to turn it over to Vicki. She does economic development for NODA. And so she helps us out a lot with economic development. But I've asked her to be our moderator for today.
Thank you, Tiffany. I appreciate your forethought of saying, we need to get together and figure out what do we need in all of our departments to improve our community. So this is a good thing that you're doing. My husband's question is, why are they doing that on Saturday? Because they work other jobs. And so it does take time away from your personal life, but that's okay. Because it's important that you do this for your community. So I will... Who wants to do the next part? Information on what this meeting is about. Do you have something prepared to say, Tiffany?
No.
Okay. Wanted to make sure before I said anything. So I don't want to sip on any toes here. Like you said, I've been with NODA for over 21 years now. And I've worked in several departments. Economic development is what I do. The purpose of this is basically, what can we do to improve our community? To keep the positives and improve on the negatives. We don't want to focus solely on the negatives, because you do have positives in this community. So you need to make sure you know what those positives are. So anyway, so we have each department information listed out here. There's handouts. And it's for the five, 10, and 15-year planning. Some of the things that you need to think about and keep in mind, a lot of times when we talk about funding and, you know, what upgrades and changes do we need to do? We think about what money we have right now. What's our situation right now? But what's the potential of changes to happen? You know, what growth are you not thinking about that could happen in the next few years? I did hazard mitigation planning for several years at NODA. And that was one of the things that we had to talk about. And all of the... A lot of the times when you go to your county commissioners and say, okay, you know, what do you think your needs are going to be in even just 10 years? A lot of times their comment is, well, what are we going to have funding for? What's our funding amount going to be? So this is to look at not just what can we afford, but what do we need to do? And also potential funding sources. So we'll talk about a few of those. But let's go ahead and jump right into the first one on the list versus department, and that's the water department. And is there anybody here that wants to talk about the water department items?
Melissa?
Yeah.
You put together your list, so I need you to present your list, and then we can... Is that how we...
Right, yes, yes. Before you start, I need to ask the board, so that everybody knows. What is the current source of funding for the water department?
Water, sewer, and garbage. And then, you know, sometimes we do REAP grants or CDBG grants.
Okay. Does any of your sales tax go to help funding of the water department projects? Or is it...
None of it's dedicated.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that that's what it was. Okay, go ahead.
You want to get it down with?
And if you need to explain any, why you put it on there.
For five years, got a new truck, changing the membranes and RO number two. Been doing it for a while. New water line on Dunlap between fourth and seventh. It's a pretty bad line. Taking out some of the old fire hydrants. And we have some that are sitting right next to brandings. New water lines going north of town. We got to talk about extending the city limit. Replumbing wells, one and two. And a 10-year. Accurate GPS mapping of the water lines. Another new truck. Isolation valves throughout town to isolate separate areas. And we talked about that with Curtis a while back. And then by that time, you're trying to change the membranes and RO number one. Extend the water line from fourth to sixth in the alley east of Benita. Fifteen-year, got a new RO unit to replace number two. Two new wells and plumbing. New plumbing and isolation valves inside and outside the water plant.
Okay. I have a couple of quick questions. How many trucks do you have for the water department?
Three.
Three? Okay. So in theory, you could be looking at replacing one of those trucks every five years, which means you can get 15 years out of a truck. And that's not bad. You know, the trucks don't do a lot of highway miles, but they do have to wear and carry them down. So that's a good thing to consider, you know, what kind of condition those are in. Take out old fire hydrants. So that's not replacing fire hydrants. That's just, like I said, removing the ones that are still there beside the newer hydrants. Okay. Yeah, that's a good thing to do. Of course, your firefighters should know which ones are the active hydrants, but it's still a good thing to get it out of the way. So, okay.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I have a question. I forgot. When I first heard the word membrane in the town council meeting, I was thinking like a coffee filter on a coffee maker. But that's a pretty expensive piece of equipment, isn't it?
Yeah.
Could you explain that to me? Because I'm very forgetful.
On the RO unit, there's six long tubes. There, and I think there's three in each one.
I think so.
Three membranes in each one of those tubes. And when they're basically a big filter.
Okay. I want to say, as I went through the various departments, I guess we have to establish priorities, but just looking at the water department, I would move the whole water department up to priority one. The one thing that caught my eye was these isolation valves where we can make repairs. I thought that was an awfully good suggestion, where we don't have to shut down so much of the town.
Would it spend a lot of money fixing to repair that water plant out there? How long do we get out of the membranes?
They say five to seven years.
So it'd be the tube that's going to need to probably be replaced immediately, won't it? Is that part in the repair?
Yes. Right? That is. That's why the membranes for RO1 is in the 10-year, and RO2 is in the 5-year.
But she just said that they only last seven, eight years.
Well, that's why that one, because we're getting ready to change one in that repair.
That's going to make 15 years.
What do you mean?
If we fix it now...
Fix within five, and then this one within 10, and then that within 15. So it'd be five, 10, 15, be like five years.
Because then that RO2 will be changed again at the 15.
It's going to be changed within 15. What's it going to be changed now?
Huh?
What's it going to be fixed to be changed now, right?
Just one. Just one.
So, I mean, how do we prevent what happened to us within the last two years going into the future? We spent $500,000 to repair it.
How do we prevent it?
Yeah.
Well, we make the proper repairs. I mean, that's, to me, is we have to get in there and we have to make the proper repairs.
I mean, wasn't that one of the things, though, that we weren't changing the membranes out like we supposed to?
No.
Leaks?
No, it leaked.
Underneath the floor.
Under the floor, but that didn't have anything to do with the... That was nothing more than a broken pipe. Right? I couldn't correct about that, but...
How many times have we changed a membrane out since it's been going? Since it's been going?
We changed on... We got an emergency grant from OWRB. I think it's been about six years ago that we changed on.
Should we talk about $8,000 every time we change them out?
I have one more question. The two new wells, is that because of increased demand for water or some existing wells? Not up to 7%?
Because of the demand that is already changing.
It could probably be the demand of the water, and then also it could be end up being the drawdown of the wells and the new regulations of OWRB, because they're talking about limiting the amount of water that people have in the wells.
Do you live for like our state go to have what we call the treatment of water, the state requiring better water in the next five, 10 years? Do you think the state would require better water in the next five to 10 years? What we'd have to do if they did? Like what do you call it, nitrate level or...
Like if they lower the threshold?
Yes.
I mean, I know that they haven't been talking about any of it, but...
Usually if they do, they give like a two-year warning.
What is your... The town's current nitrate level?
About the last week, the raw nitrates have been around 102.
102.
We usually have problems in Oklahoma.
So, you know, that's something that you might look into. Because there's always rumors a couple of years before they actually... Usually, I put that way. There's rumors before they actually try to put in to affect any changes in that. So what can you do different that might help lower the nitrate levels to get it down, you know, lower? And that's something that, you know, a lot of times when you start looking at that, what can you do different? It means changing out your RO setup, which is a huge capital undertaking. How long have you had your RO?
Two thousand one hundred and twenty.
I'm sorry?
Twenty years.
About 20 years.
20 years? Okay. So replacing parts of your RO system is going to... You're not going to build to replace like with like, most likely, because there's been changes, new standards.
We had a leak underneath our concrete slab, and it collapsed, formed and damaged.
Oh.
So we just spent half a million dollars, or it's coming less than that, but to repair one of them, so...
Yeah. Yeah, they're replacing one of the skids.
Okay, yeah.
One of them.
Yeah.
They're in the process of it.
Yeah, okay. So, and I'm sure you probably do keep up with Water Resources Board and their information, you know, because that helps guide you, what you need to be looking at and thinking about. So, you know, it's good to keep up with that, so that you can give your board a heads-up of, hey, this is what they're starting to say we're needing to do. And this is some cost estimates of what it's going to be.
What's going to happen in the future? Have you got any... I mean, are there any more spilling for you guys?
Yeah, I think I and Jamie are going to go for the C's, all the C's and B's, and normal operator classes.
Okay. Yeah. And a lot of times at those classes, you can also hear some potential future changes. Keeping in mind, the potential future changes usually does come to pass. So that, you know, having your people go to that training and then come back and kind of, you know, sit down, talk with you, and tell you what they learned and things that they heard and stuff. And that's always good, because it helps you stay up on what they might be looking at, so...
I have a quick question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
On the... On planning new wells, I know all of our wells are near or in farmland that's fertilized, and that amplifies the nitrate thing. Would it be possible to consider drilling a well, you know, farther away or in more of a treed area or something like that rather than in farmland, even if it took more pipe to get there to try to reduce the nitrates? You know, if you're going to drill a new well anyway, maybe look for an alternative spot to put them.
Right. And that's not a bad suggestion. There's a lot of different factors involved in that. It's, you know, finding the location, having the landowner willing to allow, you know, a lease for the town to drill the well. What's the quality of that water well? And then hooking that well into the existing system. So, you know, you don't want to get too far away from the rest of it, because that is major expense. And the expense for putting new water lines like that in your service... They're not called service lines, they're the transmission lines. Because in Oklahoma, we have the oil field business that's, you know, if they're booming at the time, then your transmission lines are going to cost more, just to... Just for the material. So that's, you know, an added expense that you have to look at. But it is something to consider if you can find a location that has lower nitrates than what you're pulling out your raw wells now. But yeah, it's... And just drilling a new well and hooking it into the system is not cheap. I'll just tell you, you know, we deal with communities all the time, and they get their cost estimates back, and they go, are you kidding me? And that's one of the things about looking at the 10 and 20 years, even the 5-year, what your cost is now, and 10 and 15 years could be double. And I know Bert Schak has said yes, because he knows on the fire department, what the bunker gear costs today is not what it's going to cost in a year. So everything is going up, and especially through this pandemic, crisis, prices have gone crazy. But that is something that, you know, that's why you need to be looking ahead at these. You know, what are those costs going to be that we need to consider? Especially on your one to five-year projections. You know, those, because that's what you need to find the funding for. Like I said, there are grant opportunities out there. CDBG and REAP are two of them that you can go through NODA to apply for those. Water Resources Board has a REAP grant program as well. Are you guys on the list for an OWRB REAP grant? I haven't looked at the list since it came out in the fall, so I don't remember Hennessy... I don't think you guys are on there. A lot of times with Water Resources Board REAP grant, you apply for something, and if you don't get funded, because they usually only fund one or two per cog district, then you stay on that list. And every year, you, you know, can resubmit, and you just, you know, maybe make a few changes to give yourself some more extra points, whether it be additional match money or whatever, then you can move up on that list. But if somebody can come in and have a really bad problem and have really good points, and they can go from they weren't on the list last year to they get funded. So that's a possibility, especially for your RO, because, you know, Water Resources Board, that's their... That's their thing, water and sewer. And so that's a good funding source. There's also EDA grants, Economic Development Administration. That's what I do. It's what I focus on mainly is EDA grants. They do a lot of infrastructure grants. The thing on EDA grants is the project needs to be something that will increase good-paying jobs in your community. So you normally have to have a business tied to it. A business is wanting to locate here, but they need this infrastructure. And the business will create jobs. Or you have a business that needs to expand, and you need to, as an example, increase the water lines going to that location, because they are manufacturing something that they need to use more water. So, you know, if you have a four-inch water line going to that facility, they're going to need a six or eight inch. So that, you know, based upon the projection of how many new jobs they would create in the community, then that you can apply for. There's also a CDVG EDIF, which is Economic Development Infrastructure. I don't do a lot of those, because the pay of the new jobs has to be 110% of the county average wage. And a lot of times, unless it's a big company coming in and bringing a lot of jobs, most of our small towns don't really have any employers that are going to be able to meet that criteria.
Now, that's a... Is that the third grant you're bringing up, the CDVG?
CDVG EDIF.
Okay. But before that, there was a EDA?
EDA grant, yes.
Does that have those strict requirements of meeting this wage level?
Those requirements are more along the lines of what your average wage is, what your income level is for your residents. They look more at your unemployment and your personal income.
Would that be something that Hennessy could meet without problems? I assume you're familiar with our income situation.
Right, yes. Yes, Hennessy has the potential to be able to apply for it. What comes into more of the concern is how many new jobs are going to be created for the amount of investment that would need to be made? And, you know, and what type of jobs are being created? If you're creating a... If the new job is going to be waitressing, or, you know, if it's going to be a restaurant, those are considered high-paying jobs. EDA wants to bring federal jobs to our communities.
Are these state or federal monies?
EDA is federal money. It's through the Economic Development Administration, which is a part of the U.S. Department of Commerce. The CDVG and CDVG EDIF, that's federal money too, but it's controlled through the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, so...
Is there a limit on CDVG grants annually from NODA?
They just changed those requirements, and they increased the maximum you can apply for is $450,000, I believe.
How many... How many CDVG grants can NODA give each year?
Well, we don't get... We're not allotted a certain dollar amount. Now, REAP, we are. REAP grants, NODA receives a set amount of funding from the state, and then we take the applications and go through and score them. On CDVG, it's you're competing statewide. NODA just writes your grant applications for you, because as a dues-paying member of NODA, which by the way is Northern Oklahoma Development Authority, you guys are dues-paying members, the town is. So we will write all your grant applications for no charge. On the CDVG, you're competing statewide against other smaller communities.
I think he's talking about a REAP CDVG.
Yeah. Well, now, there's... Yeah, there's a REAP CDVG that is... One, usually just one community will get the CDVG REAP grant. You apply for the REAP first, and then you apply for the CDVG, and it's an equal dollar-for-dollar match. Currently, the funding on that is $136,363.63 for each one.
And that's just one?
Sometimes you divide that grant between more than one municipality, I think.
We have when we didn't have a municipality who needed that full amount, because you combine those two dollar amounts. But we receive a set aside for just that one amount. And most of the time, it's for a water infrastructure, or maybe a community water sewer, streets as well. A lot of those are for... And it's... But like I said, usually there's one community that gets that full amount. And they don't... Their CDVG application does not compete statewide. It's... They have to meet the threshold requirements of the CDVG, but it's pretty much an automatic award. But we still have to go through the full application process on CDVG.
One of the things I would like to discuss on the water department, you've got on the 10-year plan, accurate GPS mapping of water lines. I'd like to see us move that up to an ASAP-type thing. I know that there's... That the mapping of the water system has been an ongoing problem for years and years, because we just don't know where things are at. Things have been added over the years into, tied into the system. And I know that we've got valves out there where we could isolate parts of town now, but due to no mapping, we don't know where those are. I would like to see us concentrate on trying to get a professional company or someone to come in who can trace those lines, find out where they all are and where the valves are. And I really... I really like your plan on being able to expand and do these things. But I think one of our first steps is need... Needs to be an accurate picture of what we've actually gotten out, where it's at, because I know you guys run into it all the time. Oh, this line's live and where does it go? Kind of thing. But I don't know, I don't know the sources of those companies that are out there that do that, but I'm sure we could probably find somebody to.
Well, actually, one of them is NODA. We have, Shashmita Sam does our capital improvements plans and our comprehensive planning. And she, she will go out in GPS and she will take you or one of the people to go to all of them and she will find where every valve is. She will not quit until she has found where everyone is.
She has gone out and she has mapped them, but we still don't know where they're all at.
Okay, so you still have others?
Like, we have not found all of our valves. I mean, she's went out, OWRV has went out and we still don't know where all of our valves are.
If I may interject, it's almost going to take more of an X-ray because they'll have to follow the lines and then that way they'll find valves. That's difficult to do with just GPS. I mean, that isn't, not subterranean.
Yeah, ground penetrating where you go.
So what would the cost be for something like that?
It would depend on the company that has that. NODA does not have that capability. Otherwise, she would have already done that. But I'm not sure what that cost would be. Our counterpart, SWOTA down southwest Oklahoma, they, either they have it or they have had a company come in and they've rented it to be able to do that. And I can check with them and find out what those costs are. There's, I know that some cemeteries have utilized that trying to find where all the graves are because they weren't well marked and things like that. So that's one thing that some cemeteries have done is trying to get a good accurate map of where everything is, get the records digitized and things like that. So I can check into that with you guys. Let me make note of that real quick.
Bert? Maybe it wouldn't be a high priority, but the cemetery chapel, there's no water line out there to put in bathrooms. Is that correct?
Yes, we've got a water well that's closed that Tiffany and I have discussed to see about using that instead of running a water line all the way out there to town to be able to, be able to use that water well.
Is it on somebody's private property or?
Yes.
Well, I think that should be added to the list.
That'll go on cemetery.
Is there any other discussion on the Water Department? All right, let's go to the Sewer Department, wastewater. Who is here from the Wastewater Department?
As we all know, some of the old manholes around town, there's still the old brick manhole, which are deteriorating with age and they're allowing groundwater to infiltrate sewer lines to cause more water at the lagoons. And majority of the sewer lines are the old clay pipe instead of plastic, which are been in the ground for years and have cracks in the tops of the pipe. Some of the manholes, I'm finding manholes at least once or twice a week, I'll find a new one that's not even on the map that we have because the map we have is proposed. With the development of the north side of town, upgrades to this will help present future development and get wastewater to the lagoons. One five-year plan would be to inspect the manholes to locate and determine which needs repair to replace. Clean or camera lines half of the town per quarter. Purchase a jetter back truck to clean lines in-house where we would do it ourselves, just to clean the lines. Replace lines and manholes. Install lift stations, lines north of town as needed for development. Replace irrigation reel or add one to help get rid of lagoon water and purchase a new pickup. The five to 10 years, add or replace the irrigation reel. Add pumps at the lagoon for irrigation. Continue to replace manholes and lines. 10 to 20 years is build a new holding cell or sewer plant to accommodate development.
Brian, does, are the pumps we have at the lagoon that we use to irrigate well, are they adequate and big enough to add another?
I think we could add one more. But if we add the fourth one, we would have to add more pumps.
So we're running two?
We've run two now.
And you think we could probably add a third?
I think we could run a third one.
Would that help alleviate some of your? I know that we've had in the past, through the spring and summer, especially when it's raining, you've had your lagoon levels at pretty much at capacity. Would another reel station help that? Could we get rid of enough water quicker to?
It would help get rid of water quicker, but in rainy months, if it's raining, we can't get out there and turn them on. In the dry months, yes, we can get rid of more water quicker and not have that problem.
How's, how have your, I haven't talked to you in a while about it, but how have your lagoons ran in the last, say, six months?
Six months, we've been pretty good. It's been dry too.
What about putting a valve in there like at one time we thought about?
The discharge valve? I don't know where we're standing on the discharge valve.
Can I put a hole on it? Our BODs were a little high to be able to get a permit for being cute.
Other than the biological oxygen plan.
What about, what condition are the lagoons in as far as any sea feature?
No, they're holding. They're fine.
You see any repairs anywhere on that?
The repairs we have, the two south lagoons where they were full has washed away some of the banking, but I have went in there and put some crush rock on that banking to help control that.
So when you're talking about adding the pumps down here near five to your, five to 10 on number two, add pumps at the lagoon for irrigation. You're talking about adding in addition of what we have and where would we pump that same location? Okay, but in the wet months, let's say you're still going to have trouble being able to run them.
What kind of change the subject? That company that was going to inspect our?
They have, they have got picked up the eye trackers and they're still downloading and getting data off them. I just sent him more information yesterday because he's working on the finalized report for that.
Did they indicate when it might be ready?
No, he did not. He's got 15 eye trackers. He's got to download each one separately and do a report.
Did we get enough rain while those were out to really help us?
What did we, what did he determine? We've got some clogged.
He says we have, they need cleaned. He basically said we need to go in and jet our sewer lines. But I have priced some jetters myself. I think if we was to purchase a jetter, we would need to get a jetter back truck. So whatever we pull out of the lines, we can suck out of there instead of sending it down to the next spot. About $150,000 just for a truck. And then you got to buy tools, the jetter nozzles and all that for it.
We've had a jet truck in the past. Plus, we had that little portable trailer mounted. And it just never seemed to, I don't know if it was the equipment was the problem or that, I don't, I don't think it was ever used very much.
So what happened to that?
I think it was sold in a surplus sale. But it was used when we bought it. I mean, it was. It was really used when we bought it. Yeah, it was.
My suggestion was to have like Luck and Bill or somebody come down and do it just quarterly. Have them come in, jet the line and while they're there, just go ahead and camera that line and that way we could inspect that line as we're going.
Now, I know, I've kind of lost track of time, so it may have been longer ago than this, but I think about three years ago, the town of Okeen applied for REAP Grant to get a jetter back truck and they were able to do that. I don't know if it was a brand new one, but I think it was because I'm thinking it was around $150,000 was their, was their project cost. You know, they didn't get the full amount from REAP money. They had to put some in, but that is something to consider. Water Resources Board may, REAP Grant may also be another one that could potentially fund the full project. Like I said, depending on how you score on that. But that is something that's a concern for all the communities. And yes, you can hire Luck and Bills or a company to come down and clean and camera, but that costs money. And if you're needing just to clean them, the jetter, you know, being able to purchase that and have your own staff doing it, you're already paying the salary, so you don't have that extra expense coming out. So that's a good thing to, to look into, being able to fund.
Also, O-MAG will give us up to $10,000.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, you put that in there with the REAP then?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So, you know, those, those are some funding options for that item because it is your sewer system. As you're stating, you've got a lot of clay lines. Well, those were great when they were put in. They deteriorate. Once you get a crack, you know, it's just going to get worse. And tree roots seem to be more of an issue for clay pipes than PVC pipes. It does cost to replace them, but it is, you know, something that will, if you have a lot of leaks and infiltration, you will see that effect on your lagoons. And by fixing those, that can help alleviate some of your lagoon issues. In the short term, something to think about is maybe scheduling, and I know it can be a guessing game, but you know when your drier months are, right before your normal wet months. Try to irrigate more and draw your lagoons down more.
It's nice to run.
You know, and like I said, that's, you know, a temporary thing. By getting new lines in, and that is a big project townwide just about. But by getting those lines replaced, it does alleviate a lot of stress on your lagoon system. Do you have a four or five cell lagoon? Is it six? Okay, okay, yeah. All right, so that's pretty good, pretty good sized system. When was the last time your lagoon was dredged? Okay, yeah.
Cell number one, about six years ago.
That's something that, again, it's also kind of expensive to have done that it can help with the longevity of your lagoon cells too. How many employees are in that department?
We all kept it.
Oh, it's one of those. If there is any new developments put in Hennessy, how, whether it be housing or business, how easy will it be for the lagoon system to handle that?
Right now, we're just fine. It's just the rainwater is what really hurts. We get rainy seasons right now.
If you exclude the rainwater issue, what, what capacity is the sewer plant running at? Are we at 60% capacity or 50%?
I'd say 50% right now.
That's good. That's good if there's expansion of the surfaces around here, then you can handle it. So your focus really is, excuse me, getting the leaking lines replaced. That will help alleviate some of that concern in the rainy season as well. So, okay. Any other questions on the Sewer Department? Sanitation. I did not see a handout for sanitation.
I put that on there in case anybody had anything. We did not, there's nothing really for sanitation in case the board members had anything that they needed for sanitation. Because we contract out our trash services.
So this is a time to discuss, are there any issues? And this might be more for the general public to state. Are there any issues that you're currently having with your contractor on that project?
Did you adjust the pricing on the dump, if you would? Because I know that was an issue people.
I haven't adjusted, we haven't adjusted it yet.
Because I know they were bringing in like truckloads from other towns and things like that.
All right, we'll go to streets. And who would like to talk on that one?
We've got the one to five, five to 10, 10 to 15 year plans here trying to maintain or improve streets as necessary. Troy and I drove around town and tried to pick out the, you know, currently the worst surfaces that needed to be, you know, had drawn our attention to, to, for repair or just overlay or chip and seal, as you can see here. We've got several streets that have, you know, well, like Cemetery Road from 51 to West 7th Street, not too bad a shape. There's a few potholes. We could fill them in with bag asphalt and then chip and seal would, would make that sustainable for a good part of our time. And we also, as you see at the bottom, took into account things like the truck routes, you know, places we see heavy trucks a lot. Those roads got their attention, got our attention first. So some of these need to be patched and chipped and sealed. Some of the more frequented by the townspeople or by heavy, heavy traffic. Also, we have some drainage issues that need to be taken care of relatively quickly. You know, Curtis always mentioned, you know, people don't like mosquito farms, you know, in their yards and that's, that's something we need to continue to address. We've done some, some of that recently in the past few years and it's working out pretty good, but we need to keep, keep up with that. Also, you know, part of the street department is maintaining the right of ways and the lawnmowers and weed eaters that, you know, we use, get used, well-used. I mean, we try to be as careful as we can, but a lot of this is rough terrain and it's rough on the rider as well as the mower. And so we've got a, got a replacement for a mower in there in that first year. And, uh, and so we've got a, got a replacement for a mower in there in that first, first five years. The five to ten year projects, again, uh, kind of listed in order of importance. These are roads that, that look okay now, but, you know, we can, we can see, you know, or imagine that in a few years, you know, these are going to start needing, you know, showing some wear too. As, as roads deteriorate in town, y'all know, uh, sometimes traffic, uh, sways or they divert. You know, they don't want to go down that road anymore because it's got that one pothole. So they'll, they'll, you know, go through a different route. And traffic, you know, changes from year to year. So, you know, taking that into account, trying to understand, uh, routes that, that might be used to, to supplement people's drives around. We've got the five and ten year project listed there. Some are chip and seal, some, you know, there's that one patch and seal, uh, patch and chip and seal that, you know, got some major holes. We need to have, uh, like a greater patch or, or a big patch like we did on, on, uh, South Mitchell Road a while back. And also, just as also as a citizen driving through this town from time to time, my biggest pet peeve is this four-way stop at the highway intersection, um, eighty-one and fifty-one. I get up there and there's a lot of people that don't know how to operate a four-way stop. My son is one. I'm glad he doesn't drive down here. He'll go, he'll go six blocks out of his way to avoid that. You gonna say something? Uh, so, you know, if we can put a stoplight there, like we've got on Main Street, because we're going to start seeing some more traffic there too, with, with things going in on that end of town. Uh, it might be a little safer. Uh, I've seen, we cleaned up a lot of accidents there too. Swept a lot of grass, glass off the roadway because people got in a wreck. Uh, so a stoplight there might be something to consider also. On the ten to fifteen year projects, we've got again, continuing of, uh, some roadways. Most of these are chip and seal. There's one overlay and a couple of patches. But these roads are in pretty good shape now, but in another fifteen years, they're going to look like some of the bad ones we've got now. So we've got to try to jump on them and keep, try to keep ahead of this a little bit. Again, you know, safety of, of town, you know, I know when I drive around potholes, I swerve, you know, toward the center of the road because a lot of potholes are toward the edge of the road where the road's thinner and the ground gets soft and the road breaks away. Uh, and you get two cars coming down the road heading toward each other and they're both avoiding the pothole. Somebody's got to give, you know, so safety is, is kind of the main thing for, for streets and, and drainage. But also, you know, again, the, uh, truck routes, road conditions. And I put down there aesthetics because, you know, uh, well-maintained roads in a town are a lot more appealing than broken down roads. I've driven through smaller towns that, you know, they still have some dirt roads. And that, you know, just kind of looks cheap. Hennessy's a growing town and we need to keep up with that. So that's why we've got this, this series of events listed where they are.
David, I might address your stoplight issue. And believe me, I feel some way and responded to many accidents and some, some pretty severe accidents actually. Up there, the, the state has done traffic counts and continually claimed that we don't have the count to.
Enough, enough injuries or accidents that you have.
Well, or, or enough traffic in that intersection.
Oh, really?
Yes, and, you know, I cannot believe that two, or a state highway and a federal highway, starts as two, two state highways, intersecting to major highways doesn't have that count. But I, I think we as a town need to lean on our legislators a little bit more and see if we can't get something.
I didn't know if that was like a town-state combination effort. I didn't know how they did that at the state, you know.
They will not even allow us, I mean, if we went up there and footed the entire bill to put in a four-way stoplight, they won't let us do it. Yeah.
That was one of my questions too, is, you know, how much does the state regulate that? So they will not allow that without the.
That's my understanding. Am I correct?
I spoke to ODOT, I spoke to ODOT and I said, we're having, we're, we're, every day I see almost, you know, five to ten accidents at that intersection. And they said, that's right, almost. You're not getting the actual accident numbers, so.
Who wants to volunteer?
I got a five hundred dollar car. I don't care.
But that's what I was, that's what I was told. We don't have the, the traffic count and we don't have the number of accidents counts. Because we're not responding to, I mean, and when we have an accident there, it's, you know, it can be bad. But we're not responding to that many.
We actually had a fatality graph there in that intersection.
Right, but we're not responding to a lot of them. So that was, that was their, their beef when I talked to them about it. And they said it doesn't justify a stoplight there now. Uh, it wouldn't be that much more. The power's there, the lights are there, but they will not install the stoplights. Just the four-way stoplights.
And how far away are we from crossing the threshold to getting?
They won't tell me that. They won't give me that information.
They won't say that.
When was the last time the traffic count was done?
That I don't know.
No, okay.
I don't know.
I believe in the last, I would say in the last five years.
Okay.
Don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you might check with ODOT and request another traffic count done there.
Vicki, will they do those pretty much when we request them?
A, a lot of times, yes, they do. They do not do them during the summer. They do them basically during the school year. The typical traffic is what they're wanting to measure. I know NODA through our transportation program, we have traffic counters. And we've set them up in the summer up by Caw City because ODOT would not do it during the summer. Well, they got Col Lake right there. That's, their traffic time is in the summer. So we've actually set up traffic counts up there for them so that they've got the information to show the need for changes, improvements, and helps them, uh, better qualify for grants too. So, uh, that's something that ODOT, usually when you contact them and request, uh, traffic counters, if it's going to be a while before they can get to you, you can call me at NODA. And I will let you guys, I'll have you talk with Peyton Heron. He's the one that puts in our, our traffic counters. He's also our transportation mapper too, so.
Holligan Development is moving north.
North, right.
And I can only imagine that traffic counts are going to continue to increase in that area. I, I don't see it coming down for sure.
No.
And.
Well, and, and with the improvements they made on Highway fifty-one, uh, out towards east, towards Stillwater, because that's such a better road. You know, I know I would have avoided that, you know, going from, you know, Fairmont to Stillwater. It's like, oh, I'll take thirty-five and then get down eighty-one rather than seventy-four to, to fifty-one. So, um, that, by having that improved highway can also help increase your, your, uh, traffic possibly. So I said, get ahold of, of ODOT, um, and Tiffany, if you need information, who to get ahold of.
I usually contact Bill.
Okay, right, yeah, okay. But yeah, have them request, um, a lot of times they'll do it, they kind of have a rotation that they do on that stuff. So you guys, if it's been a while, you may be up, uh, for getting it. But if you request, they do try to get those requests done pretty quickly. So, yeah, I would say get that request in and said if it's, you know, if they say, oh, it'll be two more years, then call us and we can, and can send up, we've got some good traffic counters, so.
That really shot me down because I like to see a traffic like on Iowa and Oklahoma. I mean, it's hard to get on, off Iowa onto the street.
Yeah.
And Iowa is like a thorough going to school and back, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and talking about streets, that's another, I'm sure, big consideration is your, what are the main streets that people take to get to the schools, to in front school? You know, City Hall, your downtown areas, the, you know, side streets off of, you know, because your downtown is a highway, so you're limited on what you can do.
Good place.
Town-wise, you can always put your requests in with ODOT, but town-wise, you're limited. But those side streets, um, they get quite their traffic too, so, um, so anyway. Any other questions or comments on streets? Okay. Um, before we move on, what is your main source of funding for the street department? Is that sales tax or?
Um, sales tax, yes.
Okay, all right.
Do we have a dedicated, what is our dedicated sales?
It's got a dedicated sales tax.
How much is that?
Um, a quarter percent.
Okay, is just for that department?
Um, for capital, well, for streets, like, like the chicken bills and stuff like that.
Okay, I can remember.
For the street projects.
All right, let's.
So do we get a lot of money in that town or not?
No, because it only gets like a little bit, like.
It's what?
It only gets like fifty thousand a year.
Really? Okay.
So it takes a few years to be able to do a project.
Yeah, that, that does make it a little more difficult. Like I said though, your streets, they get wear and tear all the time. And so it's important to keep those up for safety.
They lowered that when they did the ambulance.
Yes.
That's real, I tell you. It was a house.
Yeah.
Okay, um, parks.
The parks are, are in the same condition that they were in before I even started working here. The same features, the same amenities. Well, yeah, okay, I'm getting there. Uh, we've started improving. We've got a brand-new, uh, water park, Aquatic Center, which has really, you know, the whole, whole park is, is brand-new. We've also started improvements at Hennessy, Pat Hennessy Park over on Rappahoe, uh, with, uh, a new playground equipment there. That, you know, if you go by and look at that, it's really looks sharp, but it's detracted by everything else that's around it. You know, there, there, everything's dated, you know, park. So with all that in mind, um, our one to five year projects, Bullfoot, I've got, you know, first, uh, restocking a pond there. Tiffany and I talked and mentioned that a while back in one of our board meetings, our manager's meetings. Couple people, couple people that walk around there all the time wondered if we were going to refinish the bridge. So we've got that on there because it is a little rough looking. Cleaning up, we're already started cleaning up all the trees and, uh, brush that has accumulated over the years. Uh, we've already taken out that old broken concrete picnic table that was going to hurt somebody, uh, down at Bullfoot. And, uh, we're going to order a metal one to replace that. But we've got, uh, you know, there's a lot of people down, that walk down there. And I was, I was really impressed as we mow, uh, you know, I, I pull over and wait for them to go by if I'm close to the walking path. And, you know, everybody's really friendly, but there's a lot of people that walk down there. And we don't have any drinking fountains, uh, you know, scattered around there. So I thought maybe add some drinking fountains. I see a lot of people at Bullfoot Park with their kids going to the playground areas. And the parents just go sit on their phones. They're not active. So if we, you know, add some amenities to, uh, maybe get the parents that got, and they've got some pictures on here. I got online and did some research, uh, some playground equipment for adults, exercise equipment. Something to keep them active too. You know, they can't go walk while their kids are playing, or they could probably, but, you know, a lot of times with little kids, you need to be right there with them because somebody could get hurt, uh, even in a fitness playground. So if we have something there for the adults, it might attract a lot more attention. That's one of the areas where we can put it. Also, um, replacing signs. Uh, and one of the things that they had online, uh, for, for growing towns is to try to connect your parks. The signage in the parks, if it was, you know, the same for all the parks and all the amenities, um, it just kind of draws them together, um, makes it more of a community theme or idea. Memorial Park, since it's, you know, mostly, uh, in my opinion, it's just a stop and reflect, you know, maybe have lunch there. Uh, you know, there's not really an atmosphere for playground and stuff like that. It's, it's, it's a memorial park. So, uh, professionally painting or replacing the welcome sign at the corner there where we redid that whole corner, uh, might, might give it a little bit of a facelift. Again, drinking fountains, um, we're, we've got a flag pole. Uh, we just need to get the old one pulled and put the new flag pole up because that one is the old rope style. And you can't keep ropes on flag poles anymore, not in Oklahoma. They just keep tearing. And then I thought maybe, you know, refinish that cannon that's been sitting there for a long time. It's, the paint's all chipping on and everything. I don't know how much, you know, professional painting painters would be, but, you know, that might be something to look into to just kind of refresh it, give it a facelift. The scout camp over there, uh, I've got to restore and reinforce the old wellhouse. You know, that's got some historical value and maybe put a plaque on there stating when it was installed and stuff like that. It doesn't really detract too much as it is from the, well, I mean, as it is, yes. But if we can refinish it, maybe, uh, reinforce it somehow, put a roof on it so it doesn't get any more wear and tear inside, might help it to, uh, to, to remain a lot longer. But, uh, that, that park also has an old basketball court that, that we might look at fixing too. But also again, drinking fountains there. Uh, the Pat Hennessy Park, again, as I stated, we've already got some, uh, you know, new feature there, new, new playground. But that lighthouse, and I understand that's got a little bit of historical value too, but it's very dangerous. You know, we need to do something. We've already had, uh, Henry's welding looked at it, reinforcing it, and he said it's going to be a major task. That's been a few years ago. But, uh, you know, some way to keep kids out of it because they get inside there and play. And I, I go around there every, uh, every time I mow and pick up rocks that have fallen off of it. So it's, it's deteriorating pretty fast, so we need to look at, at that and those, uh, those pillars. You know, again.
Are the rocks falling from the top of the tower?
I don't know where they're falling from. Uh, it could be even just rocks that the kids get inside there and throw out. But they're, you know, they're, they've been falling from somewhere. I'm not, I personally don't, couldn't fit through the door, but I don't want to get inside of it. But it's just, uh, you know, mortar, rock and mortar assemblies like that are just, they deteriorate. You know, and it, it hasn't been coated with anything or, or re-mortared in years. Uh, so we need to look at some major, major ideas at that. And I, you know, again, I understand that may have some historical value, but that's a growing part of town too, with Osborne addition going in. You know, if we want to get some people in there with some families, some kids at that end of town, the modernization of parks is, is important. People like to see, you know, newer, newer, safer playground equipment and stuff like that. Someplace where they're going to let their kids go over there and play and not worry about it getting hurt, you know? So that's something to consider. Uh, that's, that's all these are, just considerations. Uh, things that I've seen online and, and as I drive around and, and look at stuff, you know, what I would like to see if I were living in town. The water park, again, that's a, that's a really nice, uh, facility, the whole thing put all together. I've learned some stuff this last summer about, uh, the water, about the splash pad and upkeep of that. So that'll, that'll help, help with that quite a bit, cleaning that up, uh, keeping it looking good. I've learned some few things about that. But, um, there's, there's not a whole lot of shade over there. Tiffany and I were talking about that a while ago. We need, uh, need some areas, you know, we've got some picnic tables and benches. And while I've seen some, uh, you know, kids stretched out on a bench or something, sunbathing, uh, sometimes we have a lot of birthday parties and stuff over there. And, uh, can, you know, some of them canvas canopies over a couple of picnic tables or, or the benches.
I'm sorry, which park are you?
The water park, the Aquatic Center. I don't know what to call.
Talking about around the splash pad.
Yeah, around the splash pad and those concrete areas that, you know, that's where we've got all the picnic tables and benches and concrete's hot in the summertime. So if we had some way to shade those, that would, that would, uh, help, help improve the aesthetics around there and the quality of, of enjoyment of the property.
What about fans around Pat Hennessy? What about fans around Pat Hennessy?
I don't know.
I had something, people that live over in that, you know, alley and just asking about, you know, since it's so close to the street, kids playing.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. And, you know, with, with the, the more homes, the more families moving in, the more traffic is going to be. And, and also there are some heavy trucks that are used at Rappa Hough.
How to keep people from parking in there and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, we can do that with all the parks, but most of them have to be a little more accessible than that. But Pat Hennessy, uh, you know, we've got that side street, which would, you know, we can have an opening there. We've got that main, main opening there, the main, uh, gate, so to speak, with the drive there that's very seldom used. So I don't know, you know, just another thing to consider, you know, how we could, uh, make it safer for the kids. That's something we just need to always keep on our mind.
There's no parking at that park?
Well, a lot, I've seen a few cars park on the side, but most of the traffic to that park is just local. You know, so with, as I was saying, because it's walking distance and now it's going to be, you know, twenty to thirty houses. So, yeah, most of it's walking. So keeping a fence wouldn't be out of the question like it would at, uh, you know, Memorial Park or Bullfoot Park. You know, you can't really fence those off, but, but that one, that's a good idea because I'm going to keep in mind. Uh, generally, again, uh, lawn mowers, we'll, we'll need lawn mowers. And, and we bought three of them in two years, uh, those, those scag mowers. And they're quite expensive. And like I mentioned before, things aren't going to cost next year what they cost this year. I called down there and priced the, the sixty-one inch that we've got, two of those, they're, they're, they're creeping up to ten grand. And while those are heavy duty mowers and they work great, um, they're going to start, the ones we've got, the four that we got are the free, are going to start breaking down, you know, frame and, and motor wear and all that on because we use them almost constantly during the summertime, during the moment season. They're, they're just always running. So I've got, I've got to kind of spread those out, as you can see, over the, over the whole fifteen years. Uh, try to reduce the, you know, big impact, try to spread that out a little bit. Some of the parks had, you know, charcoal grillers. I saw a few online, uh, that, that looked pretty similar to what we had. But the ones we had were rusted and broken. We've already taken one or two out, uh, just because somebody's going to get hurt on them. But we need to, you know, think about maybe having some places like that. We've got picnic tables there. A lot of people like to go cook out, uh, as long as it's not a fire ban. So, uh, that might be something. And then also the, uh, the weed eaters. Uh, again, they're used almost constantly. So you notice I've got, replacing two of the weed eaters every five or ten years throughout there because even though we get heavy duty ones, they wear out fast. The five to ten year projects, um, with, with the improvements on the parks and modernization of the parks, hopefully will have more traffic. Uh, I noticed the, uh, the road going into Bullfoot on the south end there is really narrow. And if you get cars coming in, you know, coming and going, people are driving in the park. And the parking area is, is really small. There's room for really like six cars in there. And we have, you know, track events and, and other events in there. We'd like to have some more. So if we could enlarge the parking area, maybe going, uh, was that west up that hill? You know, level out hill out a little bit and, and use that on the other side of the road. And Memorial Park, maybe, uh, add another pavilion. You know, that one is, is, uh, is nice, but we've got a lot of room in the park. Again, uh, unless, you know, we're thinking about putting some playground equipment in there. Another pavilion would add, uh, room for more families. Uh, again, you know, people are still concerned about COVID. They're going to spread out more. So if we have more room for them to, to read, uh, that would be probably a, a really good thing to do.
David, when you talk about pavilion, you're probably talking about a structure that would say, say, uh, twenty, thirty people or?
Yeah, similar to the one that's there now. The size and, and, and structure, uh, cement floor, uh, with picnic tables and a big canopy. Uh, yeah. And also, I've got on there.
Like at Meadow Lake Park at Enid, um, they have these sheltered, uh, areas where you can have your picnic gatherings in there, you know, smaller.
Yeah.
You know, they're not for twenty or thirty people, maybe, maybe for a dozen people or something like that.
Small families or something like that.
It's such a well-used park. I go by there and somebody's either walking on a sidewalk or.
At Memorial?
Or.
Meadow Lake.
Uh, Bullfoot.
Oh, Bullfoot. Yeah, Bullfoot does, yes. Bullfoot is, is well-used. And, and, yeah, we've got, uh, in the, uh, yeah, the, the ten to fifteen year project, uh, I was looking at a pavilion on the southwest side of the pond across from the bathrooms. And there's a big open area up there and maybe have a bathroom there. Uh, pavilion, whatever we were talking about. Bathroom, someplace you'd like to have a picnic. But also, you know, at Bullfoot, um, you know, we don't have a place like a lot of larger towns or, or more modern towns, uh, dog parks. You know, there's, there's, uh, places that, um, people, you know, people like that, they think their dogs are, are pets' family. And they like to take their dogs to the park and just let them run. Well, that's okay, but the dog parks can have, you know, things for dogs to do. Uh, you know, barrels to run through and stuff to jump over. They have, I've seen little, like a little tether ball, but it has a, a little knot on the end of a rope for dogs to grab on and let's swing around. It's weird things dogs will do. But, uh, you know, a lot of people, uh, don't really have any place to take their dogs and just let them be dogs and, and have fun. The, the kids can interact with them and stuff like that. So a dog park might also be something to think about because it's also going to attract more, uh, more people to the park if they can take their pets with them.
Would you fence it off or just have?
Oh, no, it would have to be fenced off, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Definitely. Uh, also, you know, the, uh, Memorial Park, adding another pavilion with the picnic tables. I was wondering too, and I don't know if I wrote it down, I don't think I did. Uh, you know, we use that park for, for events. And, uh, I don't know what, uh, I didn't really, this just came to my mind a few days ago after we submitted these. But someplace for some sort of, uh, performances, you know, the, like, like maybe a band, you know? Sometimes they'll have, uh, like for the Pat Hennessy days, they'll have, uh, amateur people go and perform and stuff like that, don't they? Or do they still do that? I don't know. I, I've never, I've never been to the, the Pat Hennessy days, just driving through, but never really gone to the whole event. But something like that, you know, where, what I was looking at, thinking of is picnic tables that can be moved or removed. And then the place used for like a stage. But that's, again, just something to consider. All this stuff in mind is for making the parks more functional in the coming years. Again, making them look a little cleaner, uh, maybe even induce a little bit of community pride. Uh, asking, asking the, the, the community for ideas, uh, for, for working on them. And then they maybe even help. I know, uh, probably about four years ago, we had the Girl Scouts doing some projects. And, and we put that, uh, the bricks along the sidewalk going up to the pavilion. Um, and they put those little fancy things around the light holes. Uh, and that, that, that was really fun. They, the kids enjoyed it and, and they got them out and doing some help in the park and helped them clean it up. And it was really, really something. So we can get, you know, try to get community involvement also in, in some of these projects. If it's something that they want to see in the park, they're going to be more apt to help out some way, maybe even financially. So in, in the five to ten year also, uh, the scout camp, I mentioned the basketball court. And Tiffany's mentioned they've, you've already got in our minds or in the backs of the minds to, to revamp that somehow. I think the Thunder camp was suggested at one point.
Yeah, I don't know where I heard that.
Yeah. But, you know, something.
We applied for a grant, yeah.
It's, it's, it's dilapidated, you know, quite, quite a bit. It's only got three out of four basketball goals. If the kids hang on them, and they do once in a while, uh, they're going to come down. So if we can replace those and repair that, that court, maybe take that pole out with the light and add. One of the things I'd like to see is, is, uh, more modern lighting around the parks, around the use areas. You know, in the, in the, in the evenings, in the, in the winter or summertime, light is a lot longer into the year or into the evening. But, uh, you know, kids are, kids are out, maybe even young adults out, play some one-on-one or pick up a game or something like that. If we had some way to light those, those areas that are used, uh, even the walking path. Some people like walking, you know, they get home late off work, want to go walking. Some lighting around the, the, the walking path. Uh, we've got some there. I don't, I've never been there at night, so I don't know if they all work. But updating them, did, or I was going to ask, did they put, uh, the same lights there that they did downtown? The, what were they called? Somebody help me out. The new, new light bulbs downtown.
LED.
LEDs. Did they change those to LEDs?
They should be.
Okay, because that's O G N E, isn't it?
I don't think they are though.
They look like they've got the same covers on them, but I didn't.
Well, they should change them all out.
I'll, I'll double check that and let you know. But anyway, lighting for the, for the parks and, and the newer areas that we're going to have. Pat Hennessy Park, uh, you know, we started, started with a new playground equipment there. We've got an old, uh, two-seater swing. If we can make a longer one, you know, maybe, uh, add a, a taller slide. Uh, that, that area right now is just for little kids. Hopefully we'll have some older kids, uh, you know, trying to enjoy that park too. If we have some equipment that, uh, you know, bigger kids, uh, like, you know, middle-aged, up to twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old, they like getting on the, like a taller slide and having bigger swings, uh, or have more of them swinging.
Oh, and have a tether ball.
Tether ball?
Yes.
They still do that?
Yeah. We just talked about that the other day.
The water park, again, like, like I suggested at Bullfoot, maybe put some of that, uh, the adult playground equipment, some exercise equipment there that's multi-use for kids and adults.
Keen Fisher has that. Have you guys been to Keen Fisher Park? Go through Keen Fisher Park, they have the exercise stuff there. It's nice.
And then again, the replacement.
Is it, uh, at Keen Fisher?
Over by the swimming pool area. The, it's over on that back side.
Okay, I've only been that far.
Yeah. Go when it's not Christmas time. It's the back road.
It's not yet. But do they have a sidewalk or walking path and then their exercise?
Yeah, there's sidewalks up to it.
Their exercise stations along the walk path at Keen Fisher?
It's kind of just in its own little area.
It's in a little area. The exercise equipment, David, I think it's an excellent idea. But I have seen in many parks, like going to Bullfoot, you've got that excellent, I think Bullfoot, Bullfoot, Bullfoot Park is just huge positive for Hannah Seagull. But what they'll do is on the exercise equipment, they'll put it along the walking path. So the idea is if you do every station, as you walk around, you'll exercise every muscle in your body. This, this station will exercise your arms and this station will exercise your legs and that. So I think, uh, that would be good. Sometimes we'll get, go through all this, how to fund it, but in terms of getting a grant, exercise things. They looked on very favorable.
They thought I talked to the lady at Keen Fisher, the town paid for half and then, I don't remember the right organization. What was it?
Ambucks.
Ambucks paid for the other half.
What was the organization? I know they have a.
Ambucks.
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 Yeah. But it's, it's, it's worth checking out because it's.
I bet they spend over a million dollars.
Oh, easy. I'm pretty sure.
I searched for this exercise equipment along the path. I couldn't find it on the computer, but I'm not the best.
But I wonder if we can, is there not a grant for that?
There are a couple of places that you can get grants for that. T set is one of them. Anything for, you know, playground equipment, exercise paths, you know, you mentioned in here maybe replacing some of the sidewalks and stuff. Um, another source is A A R P. They have community grants and it's for helping keep, you know, their focus is keeping the older, you know, help keep the older population active, out and active. So those are a couple of sources, um, as well as Ambucks. You have a Rotary Club here. The Rotary?
Lions.
Lions, okay.
I have a Lions and a.
You have Quonos?
Yeah, Quonos.
No Quonos? Okay. I, I can't keep up with all the clubs and all the different communities. But that's a potential, go to your Lions Club. Masons, yeah. Go to those local organizations. And don't just go to them and say, we want to make some improvements, what can you help us with? Have a plan of exactly what project you want to work on. Are any of you in the Lions Club? Okay, all right. What is one of the focuses of the Lions Club organization? Do they have, I know they used to do a lot with vision and sight.
A lot of sight.
Yeah. So, um, if you can tie one of your projects to that, not just aesthetics, it looks better. But if you can tie it to a similarity with an organization, then that can help.
It would be a, a good plan to comprehensively look at the parks and then go to the organizations and say, this is our vision for Boy Scout Camp, this is our vision for Pat Hennessy and down the line. And maybe get each organization or get all of the organizations to pool resources and do something in one. And then in a year or so, take on the next one.
Hennessy Unarnia did have a fund. Some, some money set aside, I can't remember, ten thousand or something like that, set aside to put bathrooms in Memorial Park. Because we, we do the Wine and Chocolate Festival. And, you know, there's still a lot of events that are held there, oh, for holidays and that kind of stuff. And I think Jimmy does some stuff, Jimmy Burkinbaugh does some stuff down there too. And, but we know that that's expensive. But I personally would rather have bathrooms there than another pavilion. I mean, I, I think that that would maybe generate more events being held there.
And, and that's another thing is what organizations have had events there? Maybe you can go to those organizations and they can help pitch in with some funding to help with, you know, like you said, the restaurants or something like that.
Margaret? I have trouble hearing you. You turned your ear to the other guy.
Oh, sorry.
It appears it's not my best suit. But I think you mentioned.
We have money set aside at one time, uh, for bathrooms at Memorial Park.
You mentioned the Legacy Program, I think.
No.
You didn't mention that?
Uh-uh. No.
Okay, well, I'll bring it up, Burton added on to yours. We could, I think that listing these projects and putting them out there and asking local organizations, do you want to take this on as a project is a good idea. But with that Legacy Program, we can reach to people outside Hennessy.
We do have ten thousand dollars in that fund.
Yeah, that's what I thought you brought up.
But this is in addition to that because we had understood that it would cost, this was a while ago, that it would cost about thirty-five thousand dollars for us to get bathrooms put in there. And so we were hoping that we could generate more money and what have you through the Wine and Chocolate Festival and for other events. But that hasn't happened recently.
To, uh, bring back this Legacy Program, like if you did exercise stations around Bullfoot Park, and if we knew what the cost was, we would say, we want to put ten stations around the pathway. Would you want to, each station will cost this much money. Would you like to make a donation? We're asking people to make a donation to put in one exercise station. Or maybe rebuild the, the tower at Pat Hennessy Park. And, and these would be smaller projects that.
Yes.
I think the Lieutenant Governor gave a speech somewhat similar to what you had at the Vision Committee just recently. You had in the Keen Fisher paper. He said, go after the low hanging fruit, the small projects, because it builds enthusiasm. People see what can be done. And then maybe you could go on to, to bigger things.
Are there grants out there? I mean, that's the way Bullfoot Park was built. Of course, this was way, what, thirty, at least thirty years ago, maybe? Forty years ago at, at Bullfoot.
Forty years ago, at Bullfoot Park was some federal grant, I believe, at the time. Is there any money out there for these projects such as the bathroom?
Parks and Recreation Grant.
Yeah, um I'm trying to remember the name of it. Through the Tourism Department, there are grants available that, for things in parks and a lot of these items are things that are eligible on those. Um tourism and, I was, um uh trails.
The Trails Grant?
Yes, the Trails Grant, that's the other one that.
Land and Water Conservation?
Yes, yes. Um they they have grants out there for a lot of this stuff. Um and I will say, the walking trails, making them handicap accessible, that's big right now. Having your your stuff ADA accessible, um there's more grant money out for that aspect than just putting a trail system in. I also like your comments about having that cohesive signage for your parks. It it really does help pull it together and, this sounds weird, but it makes your town look more cohesive when you have that signage. Um so, you know, that's something, um now, some of your signage needs to be on the highway, so of course you need to go through ODOT to get approval to put the signs up. But usually, it's not a big issue or concern. Um, you know, they need to see what the signage is and, you know, they have their requirements as long as you follow that.
Maybe so far away from other signs.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, that's just something that you know that you need to to keep in mind. Something else I thought about on some of these small or low-hanging fruit items, do you have any Boy Scouts who are going to be working on their Eagle Badge or their Eagle Status? Um, I know.
I think we've got an active tree.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
Okay, um, you know, finding some of those. Uh I know in, I live in the town of Fairmont, which is not on a highway, it's two and a half miles off of four twelve east of Ena. In our town park, we have a small pavilion that covers, I think, two picnic tables can sit under it. It's dirt, but that pavilion was put in by one of the boys that lived in Fairmont and was working on his Eagle Scout. And I painted that pavilion about four years ago, um which was fun, I was covered in white paint by the time I was done. But they said that was the first time that had been painted since he had it put in and he's in his thirties. So, um actually, it's getting close to forty now that I think about it. Um so, anyway, that is something, um somebody like that, um that puts some pride in having, you know, your Girl Scouts or school groups as well, helping with some of this stuff, even if this is some of the the low-maintenance stuff. Getting the locals involved puts pride in it. Getting the kids involved puts, they get more pride in it. They don't wanna see stuff torn up, so they will help make sure that there's not vandalism from locals. I haven't heard much discussion of having vandalism in your parks. I don't think you have, and that's great. You you will have, you're always gonna have some and, you know, but, you know, having good lighting minimizes that, because most of your vandalism happens when it's dark out. Um having the police patrolling, you know, going by there, that helps too. So, um I said, you've got a lot of positives. Quality of life is the big buzzword, ADA accessibility and quality of life. If you want to bring a new business in town, you want to bring more residents, what do you have to offer that improves their quality of life? The number of parks you have in Hennessy for your size is great. So, if you can keep those up, that keeps people going, hey, Bullfoot Park, it's right there on eighty-one. Eighty-one's traveled more than fifty-one, I'm sure. I drive eighty-one all the time. But you see that park, it looks nice all the time. I have never pulled in and walked through to see what all's there, but just driving by, it's like, wow, that's a nice-looking park. So, that's something to take pride in. And like you said, there's some some improvements that you can make, um putting in a dog park, those are getting popular. Um the walking trails with the exercise stations. My parents uh live in Arizona and there's a canal about quarter of a mile from where they live, and they have walking trail, concrete path, and they have those exercise stations about every three hundred feet or so from each other along that canal. And people are there with their dogs all the time, and they have a couple of grassed areas where the dogs can relieve themselves, and they have the the poop stations there. And so, having things like that uh makes it easier. I know a lot of times in our towns, we don't, you know, you don't have a whole lot of big apartment complexes, so you don't think about people living in those with dogs. You think about, well, they've got a yard, they've got a fenced yard, they've put their dog out there. But they, there really are a lot of people that even though they have a fenced yard, love to get, take their dogs to a dog park. It's a change of scenery for them and it helps your adults and the kids who have the dog get more exercise and it keeps your town more active and healthy. That's what T-Set focuses on, so I encourage you to look into the T-Set requirements. Um you have to pass some resolutions that pertain to tobacco use on city property, and that's all your city property, including your.
Parks.
Yeah, your parks and your, all your buildings, including the water plant and so, you know, the fire stations. I know a lot of firefighters that like to chew and smoke and so, you know, it's it's something you really have to think about, what all that impacts. That's why some communities have not gone through T-Set, because you have to pass these resolutions of being, you know, tobacco-free facilities and, and I'm not looking at you, Bert.
I don't do either one.
But but we we both know there are some who do. Some some, I know, I was shocked how many firefighters are cigarette smokers. I'm like, seriously? And they will refuse to stay on the department if they pass that. And, you know, if you've got four or five smokers on your fire department, they say, we're gonna refuse to stay on the fire department if you, you know, it's not easy getting firefighters. You know, my husband's a fire chief and he knows it's hard to get people on volunteer fire departments. Um so, that's something you have to consider, but it is for the overall health and benefit of your community to be able to do these things. So, your parks, um, you know, a lot of people go, oh, just grass and some swing sets. You've gotta look at safety, usability, and like I said, for your funding sources, there's no lot of federal grants out there, like, you know, EDA or CDBG or those that fund parks, because they don't see the big impact, the financial impact those have. Those are, over time, realized. Um but when you can have a community, have people in your community say, you know, we like it in Hennessy because we have Bullfoot Park, or Memorial Park is great for the events that they have there, or things like that, you know, your water park, I need to go drive by there, I haven't seen that since it got put in. Um but to create those things, you talked about um covers, those.
Canopies.
Canopies. Um Crystal Bridge, uh Crystal Bridge, not Bridge, in Woodward.
Crystal Beach.
Crystal Beach, thank you. Um they have um a really nice water park area there, and they have some of those canvas canopies. I would talk with them about the longevity of those, because, you know, Oklahoma winds. Um I did some research into those a little bit, we didn't get too detailed. They are costly, um and like I said, you know, where we live with the winds, it may be more beneficial feasibly in the long run to have more of a permanent type cover rather than just the, but if you're looking at just around the splash pad area, then those could be seasonal. You could take that and put on, take down seasonally. Um but yeah, your others, you know, having pavilions, having places that people can can grill. Is that your find, Tiffany?
Thank you, Faz.
Okay, yeah, you know where it is. Okay, anyway, so, yeah, um you don't see a big return on your investments in your parks right away, but it leaves a really good impression on the people who come and visit your community. Um and and signage is not necessarily a real expensive item. When you look at how much signage you need to do for a community, it adds up. But um I don't know where Scout Camp is.
Second, Cheyenne.
Okay, so.
It's got a small building for for scout meetings.
Okay.
That's what the venue's for.
Yeah, it was set up for the Boy Scouts, which we no longer have Boy Scouts, but we have Life, what is it? What is it?
Well, but they.
They're not.
They're not, but they're meeting.
Or something.
Yeah, but um and then it has like a area where there's like an old concrete pad where there's basketball goals.
Okay, yeah.
And then a swing.
Hennessy United applied for a grant through the Thunder.
Okay.
Last year for that, but we didn't get anywhere.
Yeah, it's it's hard to get that funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did, through our Hennessy United sponsors, a leadership class for high school seniors. And what was it, two years ago, uh we had each team, we put them in teams, uh had to make uh presentations on community projects that they wanted. And the Pat Hennessy Park won, and so, we had four thousand dollars that we helped the town with uh for that project to put the equipment at the Pat Hennessy Park.
Okay, all right, that's good, that's, yeah, that's real good. Like I said, you know, if there's school organizations that you can get to help with some of that stuff, community service type stuff. Um and I've known in some communities, the police department, you know, you get enough tickets, you're gonna have to do some community service, you know, here you go, here's things that you can do, you know, whether it be picking up the trash or, you know, that's what most of them don't like, but that's why a lot of communities really need, is somebody going out and picking up the trash. But again, having signage so that people can find these places, um and I said, and unify design, and when you think about the design of the signage, think about what is it going to look like in ten years? Um they need to be a quality readable sign. I've seen some really cool hand-painted type signs put up, and in five years, you can't read them because the sun shines on it and it's faded it out.
That's what we've got at Memorial Park, basically.
Didn't we buy waysigns that Chris never gonna put up?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Those will, and and signage in the parks could, I think tie tie in and correlate with those and look like those would be awesome.
Yes.
Make a whole match.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
David, I, when you're going through your presentation, I'm, I started thinking outside the box just a little bit. Um and I totally agree with you on Pat Hennessy Park, the, we've got people living over there. I feel like we've, we're trying to serve two purposes with one park. We're trying to make it a memorial park for the Pat Hennessy grave site, plus we're trying to make it a playground park for the kids in the area, which I think is desperately needed, and it's just not that big. We don't have that much space. But uh thinking outside that box, I'm wondering, that is not the original grave site of Pat Hennessy. That was put there in the forties. What if the memorial portion of that park could be relocated to Memorial Park, where we already have a memorial on, and move the grave site, so to speak, to that park? I feel like it would tie in better with our park downtown. I feel like more tourists would stop and and realize, you know, and and we could dedicate more of that area at Pat Hennessy Park to playground equipment and grills and and more of a park, more of a family-type park atmosphere. Yeah, that's a good idea. Uh and I think we could do that with very minimal cost, really. No labor. The other thing is uh, and I've been, I've been wanting to do this for years, and we just have one of those things that we just haven't gotten done, but we used to have lighting on our signage and statues in Memorial Park. And we go by there at night and they're not, but I think it would really enhance that park going down Main Street if we had that lit up with some, as vandal-proof lighting and and lighting has changed so much now that you put LED lights out there and things that were a very small fixture could light up a lot of the area and maybe enhance things that way as well to to kinda make it look better. But but maybe think about tying in the memorial portion in Memorial Park and kinda switching, switching gears a little bit.
Bert, would you really save that much space? I think what you're suggesting is an excellent idea, but it it wouldn't make any more space at Pat Hennessy Park, because you're not moving the grave.
Yeah, we would move the grave.
Yeah.
That's what I'm having to tell you, we'd be move the grave and the rock, that big huge rock over to Memorial, if we can find a spot, you know, and tie tie all that in and and I really, I I really think with Pat Hennessy being the namesake of our community and and the entire historical story there would, I really think that ought to be on the main highway as you're coming through town. Sort of hidden back there. Yeah, because a lot of people don't see it and I'm proud of our of our heritage and who Pat Hennessy was and and the story. And I feel like that we should, I feel like we should put that out there.
Would you redo the lighthouse? Cause that'd be pretty cool, having that lighthouse light up on Main Street, just saying.
I don't know what we could do there, but I I would be open to looking into anything. I hate to see the lighthouse come down. I'm I'm just gonna be honest with you. If we could block it up to keep kids out of it, yes, absolutely, kids don't need to be crawling in it. Uh, safety and things, but yeah, if that could be recreated or something somewhere that, you're right, Shelley, that would be, that would be awesome.
What's the significant, significance of the lighthouse? What's, what is it?
Chimes and.
It used to have chimes in it that went off every day and played music and I've seen pictures, I don't remember that far back, but pictures of it with big bullhorn speakers around the top. Um and I think it was, it was something Mrs. Ailer donated, like I said, back in the forties. I think just to enhance that park and and tell the story of Pat Hennessy.
Bert, I'm in full agreement of saving that lighthouse. And I may not have this correct, but I think Mary Haney told me that there were, there was a light at the top and there was glass up at the top and it played music. And I guess playing the music sort of irritated some of the neighbors when they had to listen to it. But that rock, I believe, is a, what I call flint rock. I remember as a kid, you used to be able to pick that flint rock up. I remember as a kid, you used to be able to pick that Flint Rock up in pastures, so there must have been a pretty significant effort to pick up all that rock and make it. That, you said the Henry Brothers said it was an astronomical cost, did they give you a figure?
Uh, if they did, that was probably about three years ago, I think.
Three years ago.
But they, you know, they, they talked with Curtis, and at the time, they were gonna put a frame, build a frame inside and go ahead and put a sound system and speakers in there. But the total thing was, was just enough to make Curtis say, yeah, we'll think about this some other time.
But if that's made out of mason and, and like stone and stuff, what we need to get with, like maybe the terrace?
I would think a stone mason, yes.
Like the terrace?
I'm thinking a stone mason to...
Probably redo it and significantly improve it, yes.
And re-mortar it, like you were saying.
Yeah.
And make sure that the rocks will stay.
Because there's a lot more they can do now than they did then, to reinforce and make them, make it stronger, yeah.
I'm speculating, but I think they built a wooden structure.
They do.
They built a wooden structure and wrapped wire, chicken, I call it chicken wire, and then put the rock and cement onto it, and then, there is also, there's iron reinforcement in there that's rusting away.
No iron.
I hate to see it where deferred maintenance destroys a historical object. You know, you mentioned the old water well at the Boy Scout cabin, you know, I, I didn't realize it was a water well.
First one.
It was some years ago before I learned that, that was the Old Town Water Well. But I think it's nice to preserve that, to show what the history of this town is, and I would use that same analogy on the lighthouse. If there's, you know, I, I kind of think of it as like the Eiffel Tower is the symbol of Paris, and Big Ben clock is the symbol of London, if there's a symbol of Hennessy, it would be that lighthouse.
What if you did move that, that you tried to save all those rocks and use those rocks in like, the new park, if you rebuilt it there? Whatever those stones are.
What I'd like to see is, you know, sometimes, my experience is when I ask somebody to help me and give me a cost estimate, they don't want to say no to me, so they'll give me an astronomical high figure. So, what I'd like to see, maybe instead of doing a full restoration, which costs more money, music and lights and all the bells and whistles, if we just stabilized the structure and seal it at the top where the water doesn't get inside and brought away that inside iron wood support, so, but I would like to see if we could maybe get another estimate on that.
I think, Richard, I think it would be good to have David and Tiffany or whomever work on getting with a, a stone mason, a bricklayer, look at the water well. Last I knew, on the east side, it had a hole at the bottom.
I patched that into a few years ago.
Okay, the kids could have crawled in at that time. But to see about, and it probably needs a roof over if we're gonna keep it.
It had a wood roof and it's almost gone.
It's gone, but to get a bricklayer, to get an estimate on repairing that, roofing it, and doing what you're talking about with the lighthouse, and see where we're at.
And I think you or David mentioned, or Barbara, just put a little fence around it in the meantime, so it doesn't, kids stay out of there.
You have a fence idea.
I just know you're going out in addition out there behind Stevens Ward, where all them houses, they got a park right there, it's all fenced up.
Yeah, I've been back in there. My son works there, I know about it.
Yeah, all the kids go there and your parents don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, when I was growing up, we had a local neighborhood park, and our parents never joined us down there, of course, that was a safer time too, but, you know, this is close enough, it's within a couple of blocks of, you know, everything right there, and the kids just run down the street and we're in the park, yeah.
Bert, I'm gonna throw something out, since we're considered ideas and alternatives. I think at Duncan, they have a sort of a mural of the, of the church and trail, and it might be rather than moving the grave and all of that stuff associated with the grave, just leave it there, but put up some kind of statue or mural at Pat Hennessy Park. I throw that out as an alternative.
If we're ready to move into cemetery next, we've been here two hours, I'd like to have about a five minute recess.
Yes.
For everybody to stretch and use the facilities if needed, if that's okay with everybody?
That's kind of what I was thinking too, Bert, about two hours, let's give everybody a break, so yeah, this is a perfect time, we'll take about five, 10 minute break.
I know, I know, yes, I know, I know.
Okay, are we ready to get going again? Before we, before we go on to the cemetery, which is the next time on the agenda, there is a grant. There, there is, through the Oklahoma History Center, there are some grants available for historic preservation, and love what you talked about in the park with the lighthouse and the well at the Scout Camp, could qualify possibly for some, some of that. So, I got some information recently about a grant, unfortunately, you won't be able to apply for it before the deadline in February. It's the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Subgrant Program, and it's through the National Parks Service, but you have to be a certified local government to be able to apply. So I contacted the Oklahoma Coordinator for that, and she sent, she emailed me a bunch of information about what's required, what you have to do to become a certified local government, and she said it'll take probably at least six months, because you've got to pass some ordinances, historic preservation type ordinances and stuff, so, but they offer up to $750,000.
Oh, wow.
So, this is something that could, you know, possibly work on, and I can give you her contact information, so you can, I'll forward the emails to you that she sent me with the breakdown of, you know, what all the requirements are. It's Shay Ottley is her name, and she's with Oklahoma History, Historical Society, so, that's something that could really help with some, because a lot of your stuff in your parks, like you were saying, it's historical, you want to keep it, you don't want to lose it. This grant, and that's for rural communities, so you're not gonna be competing against Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Enid, it's, it's focused more for the smaller rural communities, so...
I thought, well, my mind is full, but I'm thinking we are certified.
Not in this program.
Not in this one?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a certified city.
Yes.
And that grant in Chambers.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. So, but this is a little bit different, and its focus is historical.
Gotcha.
So, matter of fact, I looked it up, Enid, out of notice eight counties, Enid and Ponca City are the only two certified communities, so, but that doesn't mean you can't, because there's communities smaller than Hennessy that were on that list.
And you know, we are certified on that.
I did not say that either.
I did.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the parks? If not, we'll go on to the cemetery. And who's here to speak on that? Just keep it right there on you two, okay?
They've already got a lot of things going for the cemetery, purchased or acquired new acreage, five acres, I believe, on the north end, so prepping that new addition. If we have to look at sprigging, planting some trees, concrete putting for headstones, we've been discussed, and roads and fencing, would be, would be some of the things we have to look at for preparing the new property for usage. Also, what was mentioned earlier, completing the bathroom and storage area at the, at the end of the current pavilion at the cemetery, that we get people out there that, and I've seen people when we mow, I've seen people stay out there for hours, you know, visiting the grave of a family member, so, you know, bathrooms would be pretty important, I mean, I would think so. Also, the, you know, partial storage area, if, if we keep looking down a little bit, looking at purchasing a mower and weed eater for, you know, strictly for use at the park, I mean, at the cemetery, and try to keep it in pristine shape for as long as possible. You know, these are, these are not cheap investments, and they are investments, because they're, you know, they'll be using for the upkeep and beautification of these areas. So, you know, if we get, if we get a mower and some equipment for use out there, if we had a place to keep it out there, so we didn't have to keep, you know, dragging mowers and stuff out there all the time, using the trailers, it would, it would help a little bit. But also, I think, again, it might help keep the mower in use a lot, for a lot longer period, if it was, you know, what being used for rights of way and all the parks and, you know, all the, all the town property that we mow, it, it, it's hard on the mower. If we have one that's out there on that level ground, relatively smooth ground, it would last a lot longer, just a, just a suggestion. That's in the one to five year projects, and the five to 10 year, I was asked to just give suggestions of things I'd like to see, so take these with a little grain of salt. We were asked to go out there and look at a headstone or something, something, and I can't find it with the directions that I'm given. Bless our hearts, whoever put that together, I don't know, it's, it's not in my wheelhouse, I'm a simple guy. You say, you know, like here in town, if they tell me go to, go to so and so's house and turn left to go to the next one, I have no idea where that is, give me a house number and a street. And I've seen some, some cemeteries that have street signs and road numbers, and, you know, we get family members that come in sometimes from out of town, you know, a vacation or something, and hey, we've got a loved one down here, let's go see if we can find the grave, and, you know, three days later, they call for help and we have to rescue him. But, you know, something, some simplified manner of, of making it useful for, for the public, for the family members, and for the guy that has to go out there and...
You don't like singing your alphabet as you're going down the road?
Have you heard me sing? I don't mean that.
Ivory naming the streets would be stupid, even for us in the office.
The new section is gonna be a lot better, because it's gonna be straight rows. If you look, go down the drives on the old sections and look, those aren't straight rows. And then, you know, they had horses and plows, I don't know what they had, but they're not, you know, they're not, before his time. Twenty, twenty years ago, when he was just a child.
He'd be on the board when they built the lighthouse.
But, you know, it's, it's just, I think it would be, facilitate helping families, you know, people that aren't familiar with, with the town, and maybe don't even know who to call, or come in on a weekend and can't get anybody, if they knew something like that, that, that might be easier for them to find their graves. Signage for the sections, again, it doesn't have to be ornate, it doesn't have to be super big, just some, some small, you know, way to designate which drive you're going down and which road it is. Looking at regraveling roads, that's gonna have to be done periodically anyway. They're, they're good right now, Troy's, they fixed some, last time they had, dumped some gravel, and keeps them up pretty good. The, those ballards at the corner, most of them are okay, but there's that one by that dirt pile, it gets knocked down every week.
Every, yeah.
Every time Mike stands it up, it gets knocked down, because the backhoe's back in there, and it's hard to see. I didn't know if they're, are they really that necessary? I didn't know.
Uh, one of them, the one that keeps getting knocked down, unfortunately, is probably the most necessary one, because...
Yeah, because it is turned around.
... is a gray wreath and clothes, that it was put there to keep people from going over the stone, which is a flat marker, but I, when you said ballards and cable...
That's, yeah, that's out front.
That's out front, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, those other ballards around the, inside the roads there, I mean, they're there for a reason, that's for sure, but I didn't know how, how we could reinforce, maybe make that one taller, so the guy in the backhoe can see it, maybe? That might be a, something we could do.
Yeah, you think it's the backhoe, I pose vehicles.
I think it's vehicles.
As a vehicle, I know one vehicle that it...
I think we make it deeper and probably...
Read it in.
Really solid.
Or off it, doesn't matter.
So that it don't move.
Yeah, yeah, but the ballards and cables out front, it seems kind of redundant to me, and I, I don't know, it's difficult to mow or weed eat in there, it's actually, we just have to weed eat that whole length, and that's a lot of, a lot of labor. I didn't know if, you know, we could take them out and maybe put them, little parking stop things, like we have at town hall, before they get to the, to the fence.
Yeah.
But that area too, it needs, needs regravelled. Troy, again, does a real good job, how he does it, I don't know, but he can drive along that and spray that, and it stops at the fence, most of the time, he did, he does pretty good, he's, he got the sites on there or something, but keeping that grass down is, kind of, kind of, really goes to helping it look nicer and cleaner.
That's always a nice sore day, with that cable and pipe fence, it, what I would love to see at some point, if we could ever do it, is take all that out and asphalt from that wrought iron fence back to cemetery road.
Great, we're in the same direction.
And then we've got no grass and weed issues, it looks nice.
Nice parking area and all weather.
Yes, yes, because we, we have services out there in, as you well know, in all sorts of weather, and I just, I just always hate it for, I see women park there and get out in their dress shoes and clothes from the service and get muddy or trying to walk through there, and it's, it's kind of embarrassing, really, to be honest with you.
So you're talking about asphalting from the fence to the road?
To cemetery road, just that strip.
And, go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna say, the, the wood on the pavilion needs to be refinished already, I mean, it needs, it's peeling, we need to get a coat of...
Wood preservative.
Something on it.
You gonna stay with clear, probably, or?
I would, you're the expert on that, for many years.
I don't know, if you go by the pool, we, a couple of professional guys did the, the wood railing around the, the filter area back in the pool.
Okay.
I used a cedar, they used to have treated fur, I used a cedar color and it came out orange, so I'm thinking maybe clear or natural probably for that.
Okay, just something you might look at it, because especially on the west side, it is starting to weather, and maybe we can get a handle on it before it.
Yeah.
Can you, since they're ripping that highway up, can we get some of that asphalt running there and put it over there and lay down?
That might be a thought.
Do I do?
When they're ripping up the highway, get some of those grindings and put...
Millings?
Mm-hmm.
So in the parking area?
Yeah.
It'd be pretty close to the same as the gravel that's got most of it there now, but millings do pack a lot better than the gravel.
Catch your, catch your, lay a wool back over it and pack it back down.
Yeah, almost like chip and seal, but yeah.
That may be something to look into.
Yeah.
Are you talking about from the road up to the pavilion?
No, up to the fence, the, the whole fence along the east side.
But that's, that's another area, I mean, just trying to walk up to that pavilion, since you can't drive up to it, I wish that there was, that's pretty difficult to get to, I mean, the, I think...
I could pretend to be a service there.
I think, yeah, I think, oh gosh, I can't remember whose funeral it was, where they, they had a little cart that they took people back and forth, and that was really helpful. really helpful. Um, I mean, other, you know, anyhow, because there were a lot of us older people who were there.
And that's it, when we do have a service out there, many times the people attending are older people who have a hard time walking that distance back, back in there. Ideally, I'd like to see all those roads asphalted back there, to get rid of the gravel, because it's hard to walk, I haven't tried it, but I know it's gotta be hard to walk in high heels on the rocks.
Yes, yes.
Well, we need you to go out there and try it, so we'll know.
Yeah, right.
I think part of the intentions with the design of the current pavilion out there was to be able to drive someone up there, inside there, drop them off, and then drive out, but a lot of people park in the way, so you can't always do that.
No.
Well, the intentions with the drive was to be able to pull the hearse up there and unload, and then reload back, but, which we do.
Yeah.
But, the, uh...
I don't know, was it even rocked, I, when I went, uh, is it rocked? Okay, I was thinking it was just sort of mud here.
But I think, I think as a priority, we need to, the donor who built that was so generous, and I feel like we need to do our part and finish of the bathrooms, they sat...
Yeah, that's the first one, first thing.
Yeah.
So maybe on the ten to fifteen, we haven't got there yet, but...
No, I'm just, just fixing to say that.
Well, but maybe we need to add asphalt to all the drives.
Okay, asphalt roads. The other thing on the, yeah, the ten to fifteen year, um, um, and, uh, uh, we've had cattle get in there before, and I, I wondered, was wondering if a chain link fence, you know, taking that chain, we got, we got fenced in the new section anyway, just taking the chain link fence along the road like we did, but then go on around the north side and then the west side, back in there, so the cattle can't get in there.
I think that's a good idea.
And then, uh, asphalt roads.
Would you get that asphalt running, wouldn't that kind of, want to move that up a little plastic?
We can see how many we can get, but if we can't get that many, because we wanna see about doing this other thing too, but... I mean, these don't, we don't have to wait on everything here, it's just gonna, I mean, we want to make everything, I mean, we would like to have these done by these times.
Yeah, I, on mine, I just spread them out as few as I could, the priority of them may change, some of them, you know, changed in the wine department, and that's fine, but I just, you know, keep in mind that this isn't a huge town, um, but it is growing, so hopefully, you know, some of these things, if we spread them out a little bit, the financial impact isn't quite as, as much as strained, you know, where we'd have money to do stuff with other areas that we need to too, so, that's all I've got there.
And the only end funds for this, so the general fund is when you sell plots, or...
Part of the money goes, is required by state law to go into, I don't know the percentage, I don't, to go into perpetual care fund to maintain, and some of it can be used for capital expenditure, correct?
And part of it goes into the cemetery perpetual care, which is to maintain, and some of it goes into the general fund.
It, uh, and I, and I'll, I'll throw this out there briefly, because I don't want it to take a lot of time, but in the new section, when we open it, I would like to have a concrete pad poured all the way on each row, and then each four feet would be a score line in the concrete, so between those two score lines would be a grave space. Each of those would be numbered, that would, that would accomplish several things, it would keep us from weed eating around stones, it would give a good solid base for stones to sit on, so that they don't tip, as we've seen happen out there multiple times, it would keep staff from having to go out and mark graves, because you would just tell the, the people that open and close the graves, you go row C, space fourteen, and that space is marked, and they just walk to it, open the grave, and, and done, same way with city monuments, same way with families looking for stones, it would simplify so much, but that's gonna be a costly proposition...
Money well spent.
...to put concrete rows in that, you know, what I'm talking about, but in the long run, I think the payoff would be, the payback would, would be excellent, because it, it would just help with so many, so many areas. And, um, and in order to do that, I think maybe we open a row at a time when we get ready, so that we don't have people, well, I want on this road, somebody else come, well, I want on this road, no, we paid one or two, and that's what's for sale until we start to fill up, and then we do one or two more, is kind of what, what my thoughts are.
Wow, that's gonna be expensive though, right?
It's gonna be very expensive.
I mean, well...
Cost-wise, I don't, I don't know, but...
But it's gonna be really nice.
My gosh, in the future, for labor and weed eating, and, because those guys can just sit right along with the mower next to that concrete edge and basically be done.
But to me, it's gonna save family members, um, money too, because they're not gonna have to put in that concrete, um, base.
Base for a grave marker, we'll have something there with good footing under it, something very solid, that, that's not gonna crack and tip, but...
Right. So we wanna let people go and pre-buy back in the back park, they have to buy what's...
No, I'd say they have to buy what's paid.
This is money well spent. I mean, I get this.
Anybody that's ever tried to go out and mark a grave, and, uh...
It's not fun.
You know what I'm talking about, plus, you know, you add, you add three or four inches of snow or ice or...
It's never a nice day when you have to mark.
August, when the ground is as hard as this floor, it's just, it's very difficult, so...
If it's bad weather, that's the day you have to go out there.
Yeah. And I think too, David, um, at some point, maybe painting those gates, the wrought iron gates.
Yeah, it's been a while since that's been done.
And fixing the lock, but fixing where we can keep them open and get them shut, you know, repairing...
So would you take in consideration the cost increase on there and sell that side for more?
Well, that's, that's a possibility, Shelley, I mean, that's just something we would have to, we would have to discuss, our, I will tell you this, our, uh, our cemetery lots out here are extremely cheap, extremely reasonable, uh, I had a service recently in, in a cemetery in Dust City, and I was shocked at what the opening, closing, and all of that cost, that's unbelievable, like, almost five times what it is up here.
Bert?
Yes, sir.
What are those things called where you put ashes in at the cemetery?
Columbarium.
Yeah, don't you think that might be appropriate for the Hennessy Cemetery?
Um, yeah, possibly, Richard, uh, most families, if it's a cremation, they bury the cremains in a regular lot, uh, oftentimes next to or in the same space as a family member, but that could certainly be something that could be looked into.
That would cut down on maintenance.
Yes, yeah.
I know in larger cities, uh, there's no land that, what's the river to bury anybody?
Right.
So they've gone to those, those long ones.
Like the mausoleum type, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments on the cemetery? I do think that, um, having a concrete walkway to the pavilion from the parking area would be a good thing to have, that allows handicapped people a little easier access to that stuff too, so...
I think is there, you mentioned earlier, grants are available for handicap accessibility, do you think that would qualify in some of that?
I don't know, um, cemetery is one of those areas where they really don't like to give grants in that area, um, but, you know, but, um, you know, that's something that possibly through TSET, um, I don't know, TSET focuses more on, you know, like locking and outdoor movement, that, um, we can look and see, I don't know. I think a lot of times on the cemetery, because you are selling the plots, that you just increase the price of the plots to cover whatever it is you're needing to do, so, um, but there again, you know, is that something that you could approach your churches about helping donate money to pay for that to be put in?
But where would we put it? Because that whole, that whole side, that whole north side is already occupied, so there's not a whole lot of room with the road and...
About the only thing I think we could do there, Katie, is on the land we bought, we would be taking out that fence and possibly putting a sidewalk there before we start with grave spaces in that section.
So just a question, instead of putting that sidewalk there, could you not just go in and asphalt that one road and cut like two for one?
I, personally, I think that would be a great plan.
I mean, because if you're gonna add a sidewalk, then they go back and asphalt it, people are gonna walk on the road anyway, because it's wider than a sidewalk.
Ninety, probably ninety percent of the traffic we have in the cemetery is in the north three roads, so if we could look at asphalting those and then work our way south to the older sections first, that would be, but yeah, I think an asphalt road would suffice, because...
I mean, just talking from somebody who like, because well, if I knows I am, but I'm gonna walk on that road, because it's wider, then I'm gonna walk on a...
A sidewalk.
A sidewalk.
Yeah.
Because usually I have somebody with me, so just saying, I mean, why waste the money on a sidewalk when you're gonna go ahead and do the road anyway?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I totally agree.
That's, that's good, okay. See, and as you tell, I haven't been out there to the cemetery, so I don't know exactly what it looks like, so, um, which if, apparently, there's not any, um, I don't know what they call, my, my grandson had me going to some cemeteries last summer, looking for, um, geot treasures, so, yeah, got, got to go to a lot of them and eat, and like, gee, thanks, okay, um, okay.
You know, I'll start it.
We will go on to police, and we'll let...
David?
I assume you're gonna do it. Okay, so, uh, the one to five year, update the police facility, put it, put it on, get it over the front door, check for the weather, and, I don't know if you guys can go there right now, we just kinda just sit right there by the front door. Uh, new signage, uh, and lightings, I think you can fix two in one on that, have that, the sign lit up, it'd help with lighting a lot. Uh, mark parking spots, if you've been up there where there's more than one person there, there's probably anywhere to park, and on the side, over at the post office, it's kind of, if we mark it, it'll make it a lot easier, so people aren't just backing in there. Uh, barricade protection, sometimes would, I can't, it's hard to even get out the door at the police department, because people just pull right up to it.
Okay, so that's usually staff, though?
No, there's people, I mean, all the time, pull up there.
I've had to tell, I've had to tell somebody to move back up before we could open the front door.
A lot.
They were that close.
I mean, because not only people use the police department for, for our services, they do drop off of kids and stuff like that, kid swaps with their ex-spouse or whatever it is. Uh, interior renovation, it's, it was partially, it hasn't been finished yet.
Hasn't been finished.
Uh, another thing is, if you go in, as soon as you walk through the, through the door there, you'll notice there's a ramp going back to the jail and stuff, or not a ramp, there's a step, it's not really accessible for, for you to take anybody in a wheelchair, for some reason, into the, into the jail, we don't get them up there, so that would need to be fixed, put a ramp in there. Uh, increased staffing, a deputy chief, one new officer, animal control officer. Uh, build a new animal shelter.
Do we have an open?
Yeah, we do, it's over what you all thought the building was.
Street shop.
Street shop, yeah, how many, how many, how much room do we have in there?
It's three, it's a three kennel.
Yeah, okay, is it usually pretty full?
Pretty cool.
Is it full? Usually full?
No, no.
When we talk about building a ne, new animal control, uh, facility, I'm not talking about a full concrete building with offices and everything, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about just something, maybe a metal building or something, just to keep the dogs out of the, uh, you know, I know they have dog houses, but when it gets, you know, lately, it's been getting pretty cold, you know, and in the summertime, it gets pretty hot out there, um, just to keep them out of the elements a little bit, um, you know, just a metal building with some cages inside of it, just to keep them out of the, out of the, the weather, um, and keep them a little more comfortable, um, since they are in there, but that's what I'm talking about, building a new, a new animal shelter, I'm not talking about going, you know, full brick building, um, so just something to keep them out of the elements.
Uh, purchase new vehicles, uh, one new patrol vehicle per year, a utility vehicle like a Gator, side-by-side, or something like that, for, when do we do, like the car show, or the, the London Chocolate Festival, a vehicle that we can use that has lights on, it's sirens and stuff, so if we were to need to pull somebody over in that vehicle, we could do it. Uh, animal control vehicle with the box, with a shelter box.
If we get an, if we get an animal patrol officer. Right now, we're responding to a lot of animal calls, a lot of animal calls, a lot of, and people don't learn their lesson in this town, it seems like, we've, I mean, we've got, I think, one person that we've written, what, three tickets to?
Yeah.
And when I drive by his house, his dogs are still in his front yard, um, so I just think we need an animal patrol officer to handle some of these calls that we're getting on the dogs, and maybe try to control the population a little bit here, maybe catch some of these dogs and, and get them into the shelter, and just to, we're getting a lot more vicious animal calls, and people are getting bit and things like that, um, I went on a call the other day where, um, where I was on a call, and the next door labor lady opens her door, and out come running her dogs, um, so I go over to her front yard, and one of them actually, actually bit me a chihuahua, I was like, are you kidding me? So I chased him back towards the house, and I talked to her, and told her to get the dogs put back up, and she said, well, we've just always done it like this, well, we can't keep doing that, we can't keep doing that. Um, so, I just, I just think it's, it's, you know, I think it's the cost of doing business now with, with the amount of dogs we've got running around this town anymore.
Yeah, yeah, I think a vehicle for that's imperative, because, say, if I go on a call for these animals, and I, it is vicious, I need to do something, but I can't, I have nowhere to put it, in the back of my patrol car, there's not really that much room, and it's gonna, could tear everything up, I mean, it's all expensive stuff, so in the back of my patrol car. Uh, a digital ticket, which is a, a digital ticket writing device, it's, it would, so the, the way these work, if, you have to write up to five citations?
Five citations.
Five citations on one, which, if you're on a regular, with our regular ticket books, it would take you twenty minutes to do that, possibly?
I might be able to show you one of those digits, I don't think I have any.
So, and the thing is...
Well, how much uses that?
You do too? We're gonna work together?
No.
Uh, so, you can write up to five citations on this one, just checking a box and saying what the citation's for on there, it'll add it all up for you, instead of individually writing five different tickets for...
Looks like a Walmart receipt.
It does.
Yes.
A little more expensive though, sometimes. Uh, this, this would save, save Shelley the time of trying to read our handwriting, and...
There's one person that can't write.
So, when you, when you pull up to the plate, when you pull up, it'll automatically download to a computer, so when this, as soon as you pull up to the place department with your digital ticket, it'll sync to the, to the computer, and all your information's downloaded, so instantly, she could see what we had done. Uh, what? New computers in the booking area in the property room? New computers in the booking area in the property room? Do we have one in the property room right now?
We do not have one in the property room right now. And in the booking area, it's getting old. It starts to, it's starting to turn off on its own and it won't boot back up for several hours. So, it's just, it's getting old and that's an old computer. And then the property room, when we book, when the officers book in property, all they do is assign it to a temporary holding box. I remove them from there and I take them into the property room. So, I have to keep going back and forth to my office to actually do the computer stuff, to switch them in that temporary holding box to the temporary holding place inside the property room. So, it would just be easier to have a computer back there and be able to do that inside.
You could carry around, be beneficial?
Yeah, laptop would be great. Yeah, just another computer.
Where you can able to plug supplies?
I'm sorry.
Or you could use it in the hall with different places, you're booking your property and.
I've never thought about using it in booking. I mean, that's something that we can do, yeah, just keep going in the booking and then bring it back, you know, going back and forth, that could be done. And they're cheap nowadays.
I'm not sure you, I know we're not, we really, all of this we've discussed today, I haven't really talked cost on very many things, but what, how much is the digital ticket system?
Digital ticket, the last quote we got for it was, I don't remember. I think it was.
Sixteen thousand?
Fourteen or sixteen thousand to start with, yeah. So, maybe, maybe.
And that's to get all the, and that's to get all the equipment.
That's to get everything. After that, it becomes, I think, two or two thousand a year. And they, and the equipment is basically a warranty. So, the initial, the main initial cost is getting everything in place to where it can be each car. No, we would have units where they could sign out. It's just a little bag. It's a little bag of machine in it and it's printer, it's just a bag. They're only talking about getting two of them and they'd switch it from car to car. But getting the printer paper, the warranties on it, the software integrated with the court, where all we have to do is as soon as we enter the wifi area, those digital ticket machines automatically download everything.
And Shelley wouldn't have to enter the tickets manually anymore, they could just automatically.
And the digital, the digital ticket system, automatically we can take pictures with it. So, if we get somebody with no driver's license and they have no proof of identification and they say there's so-and-so, we can take a picture of them. Because we got a lot of people, you know, that, you know, that we may not be able to identify them later. So, there's certain departments that actually take a picture on all. They take a picture of the driver on every traffic stop and it automatically integrates into the court system.
Ed, I see something like that in restaurants anymore. The waiter, waitress takes your order, taps it into their little gizmo machine. They don't take it back to the kitchen, they just.
Just automatically sends.
Then when you're finished, they come back with their little gizmo and print out your ticket.
Yes.
And they put it in a credit card, it's sort of the same thing.
And they're estimating that digital ticket also will have the officer off a traffic stop about fifty percent faster. So, they can spend less time on traffic, you know, to be able to go on to the next.
An outside store, outside evidence stores, like for, for the longest time, we had a toolbox and.
Toolbox and bill card.
A bill card, all kinds of stuff in our evidence room, which took up all the space that we had on us. We had about three foot square area we had to use for others to move in there. So, just with chain link and.
We don't know. We talked about a box and actually I spoke to you about it, we got estimates and we were going to prove it. To actually get one of these outside like.
Car or one of those called.
Oh, a storage container?
Like a metal storage container. And I just never, we just never went around and did it. So, I just put it on this plan, but we did have that, you know.
Right there, south of your building between as the water tower.
That's what we were talking about and just made, painting it gray, just making, because the ones we looked at, I mean, they're, they're not very expensive, boy, they're rusted or when you buy them. So, I didn't want them to just look like garbage back behind the building too. So, we were talking about spray painting it maybe, you know. But some, some type of outside storage where we could take things, you know, like if we, right now, if we confiscate a bicycle or, you know, if we, an owner calls us that they found a bicycle in their front yard and we're putting it out in the weather, we had one on the side of the building for a while, a bicycle, and it disappeared.
So.
So, I did a report on that one. Luckily, nobody complained, did. But that's, we just need some type of storage, I'm sorry.
iPads for ever patrol vehicle?
Eventually, just putting them on. Right now, we've got three iPads that we switch out from car to car. We can run, we can run driver's licenses, I don't know if you're aware that now we can actually run driver's licenses. We can actually run people in the cars. We have, we have the state system in our vehicles. And we also got digital ticket now, not digital ticket, GeoSafe. Where GeoSafe allows us to actually track the officers where they are. We can track other cities where they are, if they're close by us or something like that and they need backup, we know where they are. So, it's a better system. So, now we actually have the systems mounted in the vehicles themselves. And right now, we have the three iPads that we just switch out back and forth. We do pay for data on these iPads, so it is a cost, a monthly cost. But eventually, I would like to see, you know, enough iPads to go to every vehicle where the officers don't have to just swap them back and forth. Because I think you take kind of cheating by doing that, I just do.
Purchase shotguns for patrol vehicles, current number seven. Replace the bulletproof vests.
Did you have questions?
Yeah. Currently you have seven shotguns or you have seven?
No, currently we have seven vehicles. We have seven vehicles and I like to put a shotgun in every vehicle.
You don't have a shotgun on each?
Right now, we only have four shotguns and they're old. They were, they were surplus, they were old surplus, we got them from the state. So, they're old surplus shotguns. I don't know exactly how old they are, they've got to be every bit of fifteen years old, all these things. We just need to buy new shotguns for the, for the agency.
All those work? Are some of the guys saying they were done?
Yeah, two of them broken, I think, out of the four.
Replace our bulletproof vests expire every five years.
Right now, we got the last set of bulletproof vests we got were on a grant last year. So, they're doing pretty good lengthwise or age-wise right now, but every five years they expire. We have to replace bulletproof vests every five years and that's a, that's a hefty cost. I think that's a cost of about twelve hundred per vest. So, but they say the Kevlar breaks down over time with the body, body sweat and body heat and things like that, because they do in the summertime, we get very sweaty. I have been, some days where I could get out of my, when I get home at the end of the day in the summer, I can wring my t-shirt pretty much with all that, the sweat under the vest. And they say that breaks down the Kevlar in the vests over time.
Is there anything that provides, Ed, protection for policemen?
No.
Wish it was.
Yeah.
A new, a new firing range facility?
Right now, we use Scotty's sand pit back over there to qualify with and we've just got it marked off. I would rather have something professional where we may not get a ricochet bullet out of there or something like that, because I always worry about that. I would think it will, it's a pretty, pretty deep sand pit across it and that's where the doors are embedding is that sand pit. But I'd rather have something professional to where we can mark it off, leave it in place. It doesn't, I'm not asking for a ten, fifteen line range, we're asking just maybe two lines. Just something, you know, maybe where we can put it in another city property or something.
The six to ten year, a new police facility. Replace our sidearms, how long have we had these?
We just bought sidearms, we've had the, we know, we've had them a year. With guns that we're carrying now, we've had a year. But those, I'd say every ten years or so, you should be replacing your sidearms with the amount of punishment they take with bullets going through those. Because we have to qualify every year and we train every year with them.
Going back to the facility. Please offer a new facility, what's, what is the main reason behind that lack of space?
We're outgrowing, we're outgrowing. The population of this town is going up. I'd imagine within the next five or ten years, we're going to have to add probably a couple of police officers, I would imagine. National average is two officers for every thousand on your population. So, I imagine we're going to have to add police officers eventually. And right now, we are pretty much out of space. If we have deputy chief right now, the officers are doing their reports in just a common area. We're processing evidence in that same, we're processing evidence where we process prisoners. That can't happen, that should not be happening for DNA cross-contamination. We shouldn't be doing that. Our property room is also functioning as our telephone equipment room, which shouldn't be, there should be nothing in that property room except the property. Because like right now, we have to, you know, they came out to install a recorder system this past week and I have to pretty much stay back there with the guy because I can't leave him alone in the property room. So, we have to stay. We're just outgrowing it, we're outgrowing our area. And it's, and like the roof, we had the roof fixed. We had the roof, not fixed, repaired, where we had it completely sealed. So, it's holding right now. The roof was leaking pretty bad in the building. We sealed it and they did a great job, they did a really great job. All the leaks stopped inside the building, it's not leaking anymore. But I don't know, they, they say that that's only a Band-Aid for about five years or so. So, I don't know, we want to actually add a new roof to this building eventually and because the building is just, I mean, it's an old building, it's not in the best of shape anywhere on the inside.
Replace tasers. You're the taser guy.
The tasers we have right now are three years old. All, we have, we have X-twos, every officer is issued an X-two, they're, the X-two taser, which is the dual-shot taser. These tasers are three years old, the company recommends you replace those every five years. That is just a recommendation from a private company. When I, when I say replace tasers, in the six to ten year plan, those tasers are going to be well past what the company recommends where you, where you switch out your tasers. So, it's a, it's a piece of electronic equipment, it's just like a cellphone. Not many people take a cellphone for ten years or over five years. The tasers are eventually just going to have to be replaced. So, you know, we've done, we've done pretty well with keeping the taser costs down right now because, you know, we've had, yeah, I know a guy that has managed to keep the taser costs down with some stuff. I brought a lot of my own stuff with me when I left the company. But, but yeah, eventually they're going to have to be, they're going to have to be replaced.
Hire more officers depending on our population.
And that just goes strictly off of population, whatever our population is then with staffing levels and how busy we're getting with more influx of people coming into the town. I know we're expanding, you know, the north end of the town, we're getting more businesses. It's just going to, that's going to depend on what our population is going up to at that time and how busy we actually are taking calls for service. Right now, we're not horrible, you know, on average, we're taking right around, I think last year, we took eight hundred and, eight hundred and eighty calls for service with four police officers out on the street. So, that's, I mean, it's busy, but it's, it's not horrible, we can't handle it right now. But I think eventually that's going to get stronger.
Replace a canine. Brian Hald, as Hald is Ozzy.
Six.
Six. So, we've got about four more years now?
Four more years.
So, in the six to ten year mark in there somewhere, we're going to have to replace him probably. German Shepherds tend to last normally, I was a, I was a canine handler and German Shepherds tend to last a good eight to nine years in service and he's already six. So, really, I probably should have added that to the one to five year plan, but if we, if we push, I think we can keep Ozzy until about eleven years old, he's pretty healthy. But eventually, we're going to have to replace him, he's just going to have to retire, he's going to get old. So.
Purchase new vehicle?
How many, how many miles can you put on a police car before you need to replace it?
That just goes on the car itself and how much our maintenance costs are going at that time. Like right now, unit fifty-three is our oldest one, that's the most miles that we have in the unit, in the fleet, I mean. And fifty-three has, I think, about eighty-seven, eighty-eight thousand miles on it right now. We have, we average about ten to twelve thousand miles a year on these cars. When they start jumping up around eighty-eight thousand, our maintenance costs start going through, through the roof. Because like right now, fifty-three, I can tell you, I've been limping it along, but fifty-three needs a new transmission. And I don't want to put a new transmission in.
What year is, what year is that?
It's twenty fifteen. It's twenty fifteen and it's got eighty-eight thousand miles. I don't want to dip, you know, so I figure when I get a car next year, we're probably going to down fifty-three. It's going to be a replacement vehicle. So, that's why I wanted to actually buy two next year, because we didn't buy one this year, we didn't buy a car this year. Our, our newest one is a twenty twenty. So, that's what I was looking at was just trying to at least, you know, maintain the fleet we have now, but especially these fours, they don't hold up very well, past around eighty, eighty-five thousand miles on them.
A lot of times theirs is idle time.
They take a beating with idle time. They really do, because, I mean, they've got eighty-eight thousand miles on them. You know, it's got eighty-seven thousand miles on it. I can tell you right now, idle time, that thing's got to be a hundred and fifty thousand miles probably compatible in comparison, they just take a beating idle.
The reason I asked is I thought there was probably some kind of regulation that a police car could only have so many miles on it.
No, it depends on the police department and it seems like the larger the police department, the higher their vehicle costs are, so they keep cars in service a lot longer. When I was at Bethany, we had, you know, we, we regularly had a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand miles on our cars.
How many police cars do you have in the agency?
Right now, we have seven in our fleet.
Seven?
Yeah, we have seven.
Is replacing one a year enough?
I would say that that's a play by ear from year to year because eventually, we're going to get to the spot where the cars have around sixty thousand miles on them, the oldest ones. If we get buy one a year, and I would say no. So, we may even hit a year where we decide not to buy one. You know, we have to take that, you know, I put it into this budget based on an average that we should be picking up about one a year for mileage wise because the second car after that is units sixty, is it sixty-one? Sixty-one probably has around sixty-seven thousand. So, next year, it's going to get up there around eighty, eighty-four, eighty-five thousand miles on it probably and we're going to have to replace it.
Are we buying new police cars or used ones? And the reason I'm asking that, I think we had, we bought one used police car and then the motor kind of went kaput on it.
Used police cars, I do not recommend, I don't. Because of the simple fact that, you know, we can go up to Kansas and Kansas and Missouri sell their used vehicles. They only keep cars in service to fifty thousand miles. After fifty thousand miles, they put them back up on the auction block and sell them. We're getting fifty thousand hard mile vehicle.
Yeah, I wasn't advocating buying used cars, but.
No, I'm just.
I remember one time, council meeting where the, I think the engine just sort of quit functioning and I thought it was a used, I thought fantasy bought it as a used vehicle.
That was, that was before my time, I've heard about that.
It's been a long time.
I think we bought that one new, but I'm not positive.
It's been a long time since we bought a used one.
And is it cost that much?
Right now, they average, if I go, just average around fifty thousand, but that's fully equipped. They come fully equipped for about fifty thousand dollars, fifty to fifty-five.
That's lower than I would have guessed.
Yeah, no, they're not, they're not horrible.
Ed, now that you've had a little time to have some experience with the hybrid, do you recommend that going forward?
The hybrid has its pros and cons by a long shot. The car runs phenomenally, it doesn't seem to pick up speed. Like if I, if I turn around on a speeder and I punch it, it hesitates a little bit. That hybrid motor hesitates a little bit.
Right.
So, that's one of its cons. Pros, getting great gas mileage, it's getting me around twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two miles per gallon. But the biggest downfall on that vehicle is that it doesn't like this weather. It does not, it does not. Last year, when it was fourteen, those two, two days that it was minus fourteen and minus thirteen, the car had a thousand miles on it, it was brand new, didn't start either day, didn't start. They don't like hybrids, you've got that Toyota, they don't like cold weather.
Mine, I have no issues.
I have, I have. I have had issues.
Maybe we need to put you guys in Highlanders instead of Fords.
Well, I went, I went this year, one day that was cold, I think it was a couple of weeks back. I started it and it started, it was cold, it was about six or seven degrees that morning and my check engine light came on. And it's got eleven thousand miles on it right now. They don't, I contacted Ford and we spoke to Ford, I took it down to Maynor and we spoke to Ford about it. And Ford said that generally, they know it as a company that their hybrids don't do well in the cold. That's why they don't sell many hybrids in Michigan and Wisconsin. They said if it never got that cold here, you know, we'd probably never see a problem with it. But, but it's, but on the other hand, it is giving us good gas mileage, but that's going to have to go to a police officer that's got a garage where he can stick it in. I stick it in my garage, I keep it in my garage, so every morning now it starts. But, but I don't, I don't, I guess my, my answer is I don't know.
Don't know what trade-off.
I don't know what the trade-off is. I will tell you that the Fords for some reason, and I've gotten with a couple of other chiefs and found out about this, a lot of people are moving away from the Fords. A Ford Explorer should not be giving me as much trouble as these give me between seventy and eighty, eighty, eighty-five thousand miles on them.
Are they going to like Tahos or Chargers?
I will tell you right now, the Tahoe that I had at Bethany, the Tahos are about ten thousand dollars more. I will tell you right now, the Tahoe that I had at Bethany, the Tahos are about ten thousand dollars more, unfortunately. But I can guarantee you, they're going to last us about five years longer.
Wow.
I guarantee.
That's a big trade, that's a big difference.
They will go, well, it's a, it's a truck. It's a Chevy pickup. It's basically what it is. I mean, in a, in a SUV model, but it's a Chevy. Um, we're looking at, the Tahos are lasting comfortably between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thou- thousand, thousand miles on them. Now, do we want to police you? These guys may have to get into a pursuit with these things, drive a hundred miles an hour. I don't really want to see somebody in a, in a, in a, a car with over a hundred thousand. But I still think we will get a couple of extra years out of the Tahos, if not two or three, um, with the mileage. They just run better. It's a better built vehicle, and I hate to say that.
What's the gas mileage between a Tahoe and the Explorer?
Tahos are running around the same as these Explorers that we have. These Explorers, these Explorers, to me, they're, I mean, we're having, once they get beyond around sixty-five thousand miles, they start giving us a lot of trouble.
Transmission problem.
Transmission problems, all of them, and slipping transmissions, and they're giving us a lot of issues. And that's around sixty, sixty-five thousand miles. Um, and, uh, I lost my train of thought on that. Um, what was your question again?
The gas mileage.
The gas mileage.
Because we're paying a lot of ga- fuel.
The Tahos, I was getting around, if I remember correctly, when I left Bethany and I was driving a Tahoe, I was getting around fourteen. These things are getting us around twelve. They're getting us right around eleven, at, between eleven and thirteen miles per gallon.
Well, so we're getting us around nine.
I'm sorry?
Remember, because I calculated that one was getting us around nine.
The one was getting around nine. But now, but they tend to go, I will tell you this, they tend, the gas mileage tends to go down in the winter time because these guys leave them running in front of the police station and stuff like that. They just do. I can't, when it's snowing, I can't leave my car not running outside. It's going to get covered in snow by the time I go back out to get, you know, if I go to a call, so I have to leave it running. I mean, does that make sense, what I'm saying there? Because you guys are looking at me kind of strange.
I understand. It's, it's going to be ready for you to jump.
It's got to be ready for us to jump and it's got to be heated up to go. Um, so, uh, you know, and then end up, and in the summertime, I hate to say this, but it is a downfall with the computers in the cars. In the summertime, when it's a hundred degrees, we're going to have to keep the cars running for those iPads inside because if not, they'll burn out.
Ed, in this new, if we built a new police facility, should it have a garage with it to house the police cars when they're not in use?
That's big, that is a big giant cost, you know, to have a building that size. I will tell you this much though, that if we keep a 10-day jail, any new facility that we build must have a Sally Port attached to it. That's a requirement now in the jail, in the jail standards. A Sally Port attached to the building where the officer can actually drive in, close doors and let a prisoner out. So if we keep a 10-day jail, we're going to have to build a Sally Port or garage onto it. Um, but if we don't, we don't have to, but that would be, you know, whether the city would want to cover that kind of cost.
Garage space at thirty-five, probably thirty-five dollars a square foot, I think would be money well spent. And you could build in your property room into, for your bigger items like your bicycles and gun carts and.
Can be done, yeah.
Because if you're not finishing it and things, I, I think you could probably get by thirty-five to forty dollars a square foot on a.
That's going in with our all one City Hall.
Yes, yeah. So, but that's, that's where we are with the vehicles right now and.
What's all this, any of the, like, since we got an officer at school, is any of this, uh, the school want any more from us? You know, as far as training or anything like that, or how's that working with the school or officers?
Right now, when our officer is in there, the, the time he spends in, in the, in the facility, in the school, they pay. They're paying us.
Yeah.
Um, they're not paying his full salary. I can tell you that right now, with benefits and everything, they're not paying that. Um, when I was at Bethany, when we went up to the school.
They don't pay nothing for like the, the vehicle, right?
That's what I was getting at was right now, we're not doing that. When we were, when we were in the school of Bethany, they actually paid seventy-five percent of the vehicle because the officer spent seventy-five percent of the time there. They covered seventy-five percent of all of those costs. We're not actually doing that. We can actually start looking at maybe going out to the school and seeing if they want to pitch in more.
What about, uh, I've heard rumors that they might want another officer at the school, uh, that's wanting maybe too.
I haven't heard that. I haven't heard that at all, but we, you know, we'd have to play that. We'd have to talk to the superintendent and see what he's, what he's wanting and, and then we have to do a cost breakdown from there to determine why we're in charge of them, with having an officer in the school. But that I, but that I have not heard, no.
If there's no special training yet to have you officers at that school and schooling or anything that they have to go do?
There. Uh, drug, uh, drug, drug abuse resistance education? There, there you go. I'm old, I don't remember that stuff.
Uh, basically.
Go ahead.
It's a class, it's a two-week class they say you do. And you know, it's not something you have to have, but, uh, they teach you how to teach kids, which is a lot different than going to a class to teach most police officers. Uh, teach you how to teach kids, which is about, that, that part right there is just about a week. And it's a, then they teach the curriculum, it's a 10-week program, uh, which I was actually supposed to start this week. I was supposed to start teaching there this week and then this snowstorm came in, I wasn't able to, but, uh, any special training? I don't, none that I know of, really.
So I was, uh. Not really, no, just there. And I, and I, I am a big proponent of the DARE program. I love the DARE program. I think, I, I think these kids need to learn about drugs as quickly as possible in this day and age, uh, and what the damage that can, that can be done for the rest of their lives. Um, so, but that's basically the only specialized training the school resource officer needs right now.
Good one. Uh, the rest, the rest is actually more and more the same, just replacing computers and rifles and iPads and stuff in vehicles. Good bird. Uh, the eleven, the ten fifteen is more the same thing, just, uh, maintain upkeep and replace all the equipment.
Yeah, that's just maintenance. Eleven to fifteen years, I really didn't go out that far. And with new items, it's just basically maintenance of the equipment we have.
No, they'll be right back. I sent them.
I got by boredom today.
I sent them to get the pizza.
Oh, even better. Never mind.
We'll wait.
Okay, are there any other questions? Um, I was looking on my phone at the size of the, Google Maps is so cool sometimes. I can actually pull up Street View and they actually had the police department marked across the street from where it's actually is.
The post office? Is it marked in post office?
Yeah, yeah. It was parked and I went, oh, no, I'm looking, oh, HPD. I'm pretty sure that's the police department. So, yeah, you are pretty limited on your space that you have there. Um, and you had put in about getting a new facility. Does the town have a place where they could put, uh, a new facility for the police department?
Need a library by the library.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, all right. Because that, you know, that's something to take into consideration. Um, but there is quite a space there by the library too, so.
Well, first things first, we just really need to look at the signage on the front of that building. Right now, I can't tell you how many people we get in there and go, we didn't know this was the police station. They called us looking for the police station and they're almost right in front of it.
Yeah.
But all they see is that eight, if they don't look at the brick, the brick just has HPD written into it.
Right.
Isn't there a, they get there, is blue?
No.
I thought there was a blue.
The shoulder patches up there also, but they don't look that high.
People don't know how to read.
Yeah.
People don't even know we're town hall and we've got a big old sign out there. I get so many people that walk into the library and like, is this town hall? And like, it hasn't been town hall in years. It's, it's a few more blocks down. By the police station? No, that's the post office. I get that a lot.
I think something we could do fairly, fairly quickly is replace signage to match our new, our new signage that we've got on town hall and that we'll have out at the road entrances with that same type logo for the police station, all of our buildings. And there again, cohesiveness and bring it in together.
I have it painted on the side of the police department on Main Street where you can see it.
Okay. Um, any other comments or questions? You've pretty much asked your questions as we went through the list. I made some notes, but I really don't have any questions.
I just wanted to, uh, add in there, um, Erin kind of stepped in for Ed, um, in case, um, I know that Jack and Barb don't know yet, but Ed, um, later towards, I think around Tuesday or Wednesday this week, he submitted his resignation. He will, I think it's February twenty-fourth.
February twenty-fourth.
Will be his last day, so.
It's due to some personal issues. I got to get closer to Oklahoma City, back down towards my family and, um, I just want to say, and, um, and I know I was going to do this later, but I don't want to do it now since we're all here. The board members and Tiffany, thank you so much for your support while I'm chief here. You guys have been phenomenal. It is nothing against the city. That why I'm leaving. I love my job here. I love working for the board. I love working for Tiffany. It is all due to personal family issues that I have to move closer towards, to Chamingo. That's where our family land is down there.
I've tried.
So that's, that's the only reason I'm leaving and I, from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to work for this great town and this great community. Um, and for you, um, because you guys have been phenomenal to me and I can't, I cannot say enough that it's almost breaking my heart to leave here.
Well, thank you, Ed. We appreciate your service to our community and I think you've done a great job since you've been here. I commend you on that and it really is truly difficult to, to see you leave. And hope everything works out for you and, well, I wish you the very best.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. It does it raise tears in my eyes almost. Um, I, I, I can't say enough. Um, I, what I, what I, not that. Figures is candy down there. I can't, I can't say, you know, from the bottom of my heart, like I said, I, I just thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I understand the family part and, but, uh, really enjoyed the time that you've had here. Thank you very much for your service here.
Thank you, Ed.
Anyway, I wanted to get it out there, so, but I really appreciate Ed, so.
And I think Erin, Erin is going to step in as everyone, like I said, for a while and I think he's going to do a phenomenal job. He's, he's local and everybody in this town loves him. So I think it's going to be good.
Can we take that to Bo?
I said love to Bo.
Bo.
One of those love-hate relationships? We love him, but he's a cop and so, darn. Okay. Um, we want to go ahead and.
Do we want to break for lunch here or go on into the fire department?
Dave's gone, can't talk about the fire department yet. I'm just kidding.
Do you?
I'm just kidding.
Do you want to break or?
It won't take long to do fire if you want to.
Okay.
They're not back yet, right?
Right, okay, all right.
I wrote a, a little synopsis here and then attached a spreadsheet. Uh, I really think in terms of the fire department, the, the thing that I want the board to remember because I'm not going to be on here, nor on the fire department, when a lot of these needs to come about. The thing I just want the board to focus on mostly is the fact that we are enjoying, if that's the proper word, the county sales tax to supplement the fire department budget. Therefore, the town has not had any great capital expenditures in the fire department in some time. The caution here is the, the county sales tax has a sunset. It has to be revoted on. One of them is every five years, the other one is every 10. And at any time, the voters could reject that entirely. And at any time, the county commissioners could ask the voters to reallocate money that's coming to the fire department over some other entity. And we just saw that with the building of the new jail. We had a county sales tax that was dedicated solely to fire departments and the commissioners asked the voters to reallocate ninety percent and leave ten percent with the fire departments, but to reallocate ninety percent over the construction of the jail, which has obviously been done. The commissioners have told us they intend to ask the voters for more of that to come back to the fire departments. However, I know maintenance costs on the jail are exceeding from what I understand what they anticipated. So I just want the board and the people of the community to be aware that while the town has had help funding with the fire department, that may not always be the case. And we are still going to have to, uh, we're still going to have to operate. We're still going to have to keep things up to keep our, our insurance rating at what it is, which is ISO protection class three, which is very, very good. That will also help us draw new businesses to town and that it will help reduce insurance costs as well as for homeowners. We talked about what things cost a while ago. Uh, within the last six months, I got a price quote for a ladder truck and it was eight hundred and fifty thousand. If you look at the spreadsheet, I now have a million on that because they've gone up that much. Uh, our equipment is just skyrocketing normal with, with everything else. But that being said, what I proposed is to rotate our hose inventory. We keep about, about ten thousand feet of hose. Uh, some of that hose that we've got's forty, fifty years old. It's still passing annual tests, which we're required to test it every year, but we need to start rotating in, in new hose. What I propose is over a 15-year period that we roll our entire inventory to kind of like patrol cars and water vehicles and things that, that we do so much annually instead of all of it at once. Bucket gear, there again, it's, it's like the best for the police officers. It's got an expiration. Propose two sets of that annually. Our SCBA breathing apparatus, those are now upwards of six, sixty-five hundred dollars is about what they're running purse at. So I've proposed two of those annually. And then, as we've talked back in the, some previous meetings, at some point, a Quint-type ladder truck. And our pumpers are a nineteen ninety-one model and a two thousand and twelve model. So I did stretch way out into the future and propose those at some point. Again, none of that is anything that we're going to have to do immediately, but I, I just feel like as we budget these things, and I, I think this planning meeting is so important so that we've, we know what our needs are going to be and then we can look at Tiffany to come up with funding. We, you know, but, so that we know from year to year about what our expenditures are going to be, so.
Patty, I do have a question for you. Is there any help?
Thank you.
Is there any help with the, we need to, Bert explained in detail, we, to expand our fire department building and then to buy the vehicle. Is there any help from the federal government that way on grants?
There, FEMA does have some firefighter assistance grants and the state has an 80-20 grant. The state fund has dropped over the years, it's, you know, NODA gets that money and we accept applications. Our real fire coordinator Cecil Michael is in charge of that and it's gone in last 10, 15 years, it's gone to funding, um, five or six fire departments, down to one, maybe two, depending on what they're asking for, and that's usually just for, you know, bunker gear. Like I said, I know FEMA has a grant program every year. I don't know what their focus is. A lot of times, some of them, the focus is on a new station or expanding existing station. You get more points if that's what you're needing to do. REAP, the REAP grant program has been used to help purchase fire, firefighting apparatus and some of that. And on the REAP, it can vary depending on how you score what your project is. The emergency services is not the highest scoring for NODA on the REAP grant. The priority on the REAP grant is economic development gets the most points and then water and sewer infrastructure next and then I believe emergency services. So, um, we have been able to help fund some fire departments in the past with the REAP grant money, um, but the, the water and sewer infrastructure for so many of our communities is in such bad shape and they have consent orders, they tend to score above your, your firefighting equipment needs. But, you know, there again.
What NODA provides, I don't think would be sufficient for what we need here in Hennessy that almost has to go to FEMA.
Yeah.
For any hope.
And Richard, we, we have applied for FEMA grants. The problem we always run into, it's a good problem to have, but due to the county sales tax.
Yeah.
We have too, too much available locally to qualify.
But if the county.
We don't really have enough to, yes, but if that goes away, yes, then we would.
And, and that also makes a difference in the REAP grant as well, if you've got more local funds.
Bert, didn't, didn't you guys buy a fire truck with a grant in the past?
Yes.
It's on your website.
Yes, we bought a, uh, I believe it's a 2012 company, Tiffany, if I'm not mistaken, that we bought with a CDBG grant and then funded the remaining part with the county sales tax. So it was kind of a half and half. The town's half was funded through the CDBG and the, and the county, and we use it both inside and outside city limits and structure.
Given the cost, the CDBG grant won't pay for that.
None down. And that was in 2012. The cost of that truck was 305,000, completely equipped, hoses, all the, all the equipment. I asked him the other day and just a bare, a bare truck with no equipment whatsoever is starting at about 500,000. So over the last 10 years, they've gone up $250,000. It's just.
The question I made, to get a pumper truck is, you can't get a pumper truck for less than like 500, 550,000.
You're right. Unequipped. Unequipped. So it's, it's a lot of capital expenditure.
Does anybody have any other questions on the fire department? I do know, you know, like I said, the bunker gear, that just seems like every year it goes up.
It's going up. They told me the, in fact, we're pricing some right now and they told me they won't quote it out for the, the two weeks now because they're getting price increases nearly daily.
We do need to add the fence around.
Yes, around the property.
Around the property.
Okay.
For the.
Yeah.
Wait, is Bert, is that gonna have a concrete landing site or is it still, is it gonna be grass? You know, so it'll be lighted?
Yes.
Cause you guys are gonna do that, right? The town just needs to do the, the fence. Okay.
Okay.
And let me, let me put a disclaimer on that too, Jack. Since we've, since we have been talking about expanding the building, costs once again have been rising to the point that, uh, we may have to do less than what we initially talked about, but, but that isn't our goal, is to put the concrete, FAA-approved landing site.
Sure.
So, do we wanna take a, take a small little lunch? For a little bit? I have pizza, chili, gonna have water, um, maybe take about a 40-minute break.
Probably 30-minute break.
30 minutes.
We do, you have to trip that thing. We could have a whole day. Cause the pizza.
They have to stop and get water too, cause if they're not hot.
Okay, alright. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and take about a, about 30-minute break and, uh, okay. Okay. We'll go ahead and go to the library. Who's gonna talk on the library stuff?
That's me, sorry. So, I submitted two pages and mostly the second page is contingent on the future of our building. The library, as many people know, was the old high school. It's a very old building and we are functioning. Um, there's a lot of stuff that the building could use to either bring it up to ADA compliance, up to some type of codes that we're not meeting and/or just to make the building more accessible and, and, um, more friendly for the community overall. In my one to five-year plans, uh, first thing that I wanted to try and approach was hiring a third member of staff. Prior to, um, the termination of the previous library director, there was three of us and, um, after having functioning with only myself and my children's librarian for the past year and a half, I do believe having a third member of staff is very beneficial. It gives us more hands on deck, especially for our high-traffic season, which is the summer. We have a lot of kids in and out in the summer, we have a lot of programs happening every day and sometimes it is, um, a stretch with just the two of us. We have depended very heavily on two teenage girls in the summers and they're graduating this year. So I don't know how we're gonna make this summer work without them. Well, this'll be our last summer with them, next summer, I don't know, cause they may stay, um, in their, wherever they go to college and get work. So I'd like to get a new member of staff to take over my previous position. Another thing, um, that the library structure is lacking is an actual fire alarm system. We have smoke detectors in several rooms, courtesy of Paul Caffey, um, but we do not have a dedicated fire alarm system. And then, uh, one thing that was discussed in 2020 when COVID was at its peak was potentially installing automatic door openers at the main entrance, which is on the west side of the building. I would still like to consider doing that, especially just, if nothing else, for wheelchair accessibility, but also for, um, general use for our post-service for, cause we get a lot of packages at the library, a lot of heavy stuff, um, that is delivered to us and obviously patrons with various abilities would have use for that. A big, couple of big projects that I would like to approach potentially in the next five years is remodeling the south entrance, which leads out into that lawn where the pumpkin patch usually takes place. Right now, it, the interior portion of that exit is a couple steps down with some railings that were kind of cobbled together. It's not a very safe entrance and then the actual exterior entrance is a makeshift cement ramp, which is much too steep for any kind of wheelchair access and then a, and then a step down. I would like to make that entrance handicap accessible, I'd like to install a ramp and in fact, if possible, I'd like to make that entrance a double-door exit. We only have single standard-sized entry points into the library. We do not have a entry that is two doors that can be opened into a nice wide, um, entry and exit, which I think would be beneficial for various projects, programs, um, for staff to move things in and out of the building, large pieces of furniture could be moved in and out more easily, um, especially if the question of remodeling or, um, a new building were to be addressed. But that would include a ramp as well as some steps that would lead to the front parking area and/or out to the pumpkin patch area. Two interior things I'd like to potentially approach is just to refresh in the library with new flooring and new paint. The current flooring is carpet that I don't know how old it is, it's probably 10, 15 years old. It is worn out and there's, it's okay. There's also soft spots in that floor, there are weak points in the floor. I ideally like to do it room by room, so we wouldn't have to shut the entire building down for several weeks. We could start in one room, tear up all the flooring, make repairs, repaint all the walls, put everything back in it and move into another room. That's kind of how I imagine we would do it. And in terms of the flooring, I wouldn't even mind if it were just slab of concrete that we could paint. That would be fine by me and, cause we can put area rugs down to make it more friend, child-friendly and more accessible. If we were to put down anything else, it would probably be something like vinyl or linoleum that would make it look like hardwood, but we would still put down like rugs and stuff like that to make it more hypoallergenic and more safe for families to come and play on the floor. Any questions for one to five years? Okay. Five to 10 years, um, if we are still in the current situation we're in, another thing that I would like to consider is expanding our current parking lot further south. We already have complaints from patrons, especially during summers and during programs, there's not enough parking and for some, especially families, parking all the way at the gym and having to walk their young children all the way to our entrance, it's not safe. We don't have, we do have a sidewalk there, but I do have parents that are kind of, they do make comments about that and with the lot out behind the fire station now designated as a helipad, we no longer have any outflow, like overflow parking for the library itself. The ambulance is currently taking up a space in our, in our back parking lot and so we really don't have a lot of accessible, uh, not accessible, excess parking space for when we have groups of people at the library all at once. So that is one thing. Updating our current HVAC system, um, actually I just recently had Yarborough out servicing one of my furnaces and, um, all, our HVAC system and majority of the building is over 10 years old and they only last about 14, 15 years, um, at least according to the technicians that I have discussed it with. So that is a potential, um, thing that we would not to consider. I have to call Yarborough out at least twice a year. Once when I turn on the AC, because invariably the system will flood itself and trip and then once, usually in the winter, because it will flood itself and trip, because when I switch it over from one type to another, because it's a weird hybrid system that runs water through it, it's, one of them will break at some point throughout the year. So I have to call Yarborough at least twice a year and that takes a lot out of the town's budget because that is building maintenance. So something to consider. Remodeling another entrance, the east entrance, that's the back entrance that staff uses primarily, but it's also one of our entrances into the auditorium. Right now, it is a, um, wooden ramp over some steps and it's too steep for regulation. If possible, I'd like to make it so that way it was completely wheelchair accessible, even if that took us all the way up to the interior back door, um, but that would require someone with more know-how to kind of come in and give me an idea of what would be possible. But right now, it's, it's dangerous in its own way, like they did what they could, but it's not ADA compliant for sure. And then I would like to put an automatic door opener back on that entrance too, that is obviously back out to our dumpster. We take out, um, carts of things to the dumpster all the time when we're cleaning, when we're doing things, we're, we're still trying to get the library up to, um, not say anything bad about Mary and Audrey, but there is a lot of leftover stuff over the course of their career at that library that we have gone, gone through for the past couple of years and we've had to throw some stuff away, like old paper, old projects, things like that. Nothing, nothing sensitive, if it's sensitive, we should. But just like old crafts, that kind of stuff. So having an automatic door opener back there would be convenient, it would be nice and if we had to open that door up to the public, then it would obviously be accessible for people who would need it. And I was told to include this because there is discussion of potentially doing something with the current building in the next five to 10 years. I included a note of a new or remodeled building. I have been informed that the idea is as soon as the pool is paid off, that the library will be discussed, but obviously that's not a set in stone thing. So that's on there. Any questions for my five to 10-year notes? 10 to 15-year, this is mostly if I don't get a new building and nothing else is decided on this building, this is just to keep us going for a little longer and to give us more usable space. Unfortunately, the library doesn't have a lot of usable space. We've got an entire second floor that we can't use, it is condemned pretty much, um, as far as I understand, it is mostly storage right now and the auditorium is not ADA compliant, so we try not to use it as much as possible. There is literally only one exit and entrance for a wheelchair-accessible person. Everything else is, well, technically two, um, but yeah. So one of the things I would like to do is enclose the auditorium space below the balcony and level that section of flooring and make that a workable flex space where we can do indoor programming, we could, um, do classes in there. We don't really have a large open room, kind of like this, where you can set up tables and chairs and do things. The only space we have is the auditorium behind the stage and there's no way you can get a wheelchair back there. So we'd like to, to lock that off and we would just, obviously still have the auditorium there, but like everything from the balcony back would be a, a new room and a new space we could use.
Are you, let me interrupt just.
Yeah, of course.
I'm not understanding.
No, you're fine.
Are you talking about wanting to take the stage out and level that?
No.
Now just the orchestra pit in front of the stage?
Nowhere near the stage. I'm talking about the very back of the auditorium where you go in from the library. So we've got that big double entrance and over your head is the balcony. So I want from the balcony end to build a wall basically at the back of it and level out that flooring. So I wouldn't be touching hardly, I would have, we'd have to take out scenes, but I wouldn't be touching the stage, I wouldn't be touching anything up in that part of the building, so.
I didn't have it correct.
It's okay, I didn't describe it very well. But that would be, like, and my, my vision would be, we wouldn't touch the ticket booth, um, we would kind of build little, like, standard-sized hallways that would. that would lead to doors that would go into the auditorium around the ticket booth, and then on one side of the ticket booth would be a flex room that we could use for programming. And the other side is where Ms. Jenny's children's storage currently is. We would just expand that, and we would have that storage space. That's kind of my vision for what we would do with that space. But it would give us a nice little, like, classroom or private space where the community could rent it out and, and do like a little meeting, or we've got a lot of homeschool families in the area that they like to come to the library and do assessments and stuff. That would give them a private enclosed room that they could reserve and wouldn't have to be potentially interrupted by anybody. Right now, they have to either use the history center, which technically we can't close off to the public, but it's the only room with a door, or they have to use like the teen room or the children's room, which are completely open to the public. We can't keep people from accessing those spaces. So we don't really have a good, like, space for people to come in and have privacy or to, to borrow that space. We don't have a very good indoor open space to do classes or programming or anything like that. That's not accessible for wheelchair and handicapped individuals. So that's just kind of the thought behind that. With that, obviously, we would have to integrate it in with the HVAC system to make it air-conditioned and heated properly. The auditorium is not, it works, but that's such a large, open space that it's kind of an energy sink, so it would have to be hooked up to the rest of the main library. Then the last thing I have up here is actually a very old, not a very old, is an old note from when Mary was still library director. They wanted to build a trophy case in the Snyder Center, which is the history center, and that would involve removing the old drive-through window from when that space was town hall, and filling it in, insulating it, and then building that trophy case along the wall. And that would just be as a part of the overall museum portion of the library.
Hey, are there any questions on the library? When you have an older building, you're going to have more, like, the fire alarm system. Now, I would think libraries should really have a good fire alarm system, because there's a lot of flammable things in there. So, you know, that's something that should be definitely addressed. What are the, what are some of the thoughts around a new library facility? Has there been a lot of discussion on that?
I have thoughts.
Okay.
Cover your ears, Richard. The library is a magnificent building, but the cost to bring it up to full usability, second floor and the whole thing, is millions and millions. I'm talking eight, 10 million kind of money, where for half that, we could build a beautiful municipal building that would house the library, police department, fire department, town hall. I don't see the library being as big as it is or getting bigger in the future as technology kicks in. We did a capital campaign in Pennsylvania for an enormous old historic library building, and they took all the architectural features off the front of the old historic building and incorporated those into the new structure. So the entrance was the grand old library structure, but then it was built onto the front of a brand-new, very energy-efficient, beautiful building that you could, you know, have all of this space. And then, you know, books are going to be around forever, but I don't see the book part of a library getting a lot bigger. So you've got this enormous building with historic value, but it doesn't warrant a community, are small, to be pouring millions and millions of dollars into it. Grants or whatever, where are the monies coming from? I, I think our, our community would, would greatly embrace a modern, new facility that could be used community-wide. Because I mean, I don't use the, I don't use a library, but there are probably parts of it I would if it was upgraded and there were meeting spaces and things like that. You know, I know the auditorium is, got a lot of character, but we have a beautiful, modern auditorium right here in this building. We have, there's no need for that repetition. The city owns the entire city block, and it's just a wonderful piece of real estate where something like that could be built 10, 15, 20 years down the road. So that's just my take on it. Maybe make the building safe for now, and start working on a foundation goal or bond-issue stuff, you know, down the road, and kind of aim towards that. Because all the city buildings are in need of something. So we upgrade the police department, we upgrade the fire department, we upgrade the town hall. Not only do all these properties scatter all over town, that they could be put into one place. And, and I can offer some, some images of campaigns we've been involved that have done that kind of thing. And, so anyway, that's, I'm just throwing that cat of alarms out there.
I think part of our issue with that building is that we have so many square feet that we can't use or that we're not using. Like the upstairs that we're incapable of using. And the auditorium, and I, I agree with the redundancy, Jack. I just, I don't really see the auditorium being used in the future. And we've got this. And I've sat here and heard, you know, from the police department that we need a new police department at some point, and I totally agree with that. Getting everything in one area would be, I think we could be way more efficient labor-wise, utility-wise, insurance-wise. The library is costing us a fortune. I don't have much to ensure, because we have to ensure every placement cost per square foot, correct? And it's an enormous building.
And I hate to trip up the fire department's plans with the addition, but, you know, if we paused a minute and thought about 10, 15 years down the road, you know, you could get a whole new complex rather than kind of duct-taping something onto what you already have. And I just, this is, you know, part of Richard's long-term plan is, let's, let's think down the road a little ways and plan a little bit better, rather than, you know, just building stuff because we kind of need it right now. That's all I got.
Lindsay, how much, Jack talked about the, the book issue, and I kind of caught that with, well, the books are probably becoming a less and less thing for libraries than more and more on the technology side.
Yes.
Do you, do you see that? Is that true, or?
I personally do not see our current library situation as a modern library. We are still probably, we are probably 10, 15 years behind what modern libraries are. A lot of modern libraries have lots of STEM. They have a lot of, like, technology available for the community to utilize, so that way they do not have to pay for, like, so like, what is it? There was a library I visited, they have a film and audio studio built into their library, so community members can come in and they can produce their own music. They can produce their own videos. They can edit all of it for no, nearly no charge to them. So if there were technological needs in the community, in a new library, we could easily, we could accommodate those things. We could also incorporate more STEM education into our programming with more technology and more of those flexible spaces. So instead of all of our, like, children's activities and our adult activities being about crafts, we could all make it about, like, computers. We could make it about robotics. We could make it about, like, preparing the kids especially more for the future, but also teaching adults skills that they need for, to function in a modern workplace. We only have three computers right now. We don't, we don't have space for more than that for the, for the community to use. So, yes, I-
Okay, let me ask you, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm going back the ways, but I know at one time we had about 20,000 in our collection, a book, book collection. Do you think that's still?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but that sounds about right. We've also been-
Do you feel like libraries and communities are size? Where, where are we? I mean, books seem to be more antiquated for libraries, to me, from what I've seen, and, and more on the technology side. Do you, or do you think we have too much in our book stacks that we need that space for other things, or?
When it comes to-
Or do you feel like we're out on that?
I would agree to some, to some degree. I can tell you right off, that majority of my patrons, when they come to check out books, it is usually older adults who want their easy reads, so their fiction usually, and/or it is young children who come for picture books. The, the types of books that do not circulate nearly as much are adult informational texts. So like, your, your science books, your history books, that, well, history is a little, is more circulated than anything else. But when it comes to informational text for all ages, that is the, that's a group of books that are not circulating anymore, because most of that information, you can find it on the internet now.
Exactly.
And, yes, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's, that's the kind of information I'm looking for.
Yeah.
What, you know, are people still checking out books?
Yes. I have, I have patrons who come at least once a week, and I'll check out four to five books each week. And a lot of those are, yes, they are my retired adults. But we, like I said, we have young families who they come and they bring their children, and they get movies. That's another thing, movies. Streaming services are all the rage right now, but they're also high price point, like, not high price points all the time, but when you have to get five different streaming services for anywhere from $10 to $15, that gets really expensive. So I still have people who come and check out movies. That's the only thing they check out sometimes. So, but yeah, otherwise, it's, it's young families who are coming and bringing their kids to play and then checking out picture books for, or beginning chapter books for their, like, upper elementary kids who are starting to read those things. We are also supplementary for the school. So like, in the high school, they have required outside reading, and we have all of those titles available for our high schoolers. But no matter how much Jennifer already tries to push them to come check them out, we don't see a lot of our teenagers at the library for those books either. But yeah, so I, to answer your question, yes, we still have people checking out, but probably not nearly as much as it was 10 years ago.
Do you, do you foresee in the future that it would be efficient to combine a library, a public library with a school library somewhere close to this campus to where the school could staff during the day? And I've actually spoken to the superintendent about this idea. The school could staff during the day, the town could staff one maybe during the day and some during the evening, and on Saturdays, to where we could do a combination, pool our resources, have one utility bill for a building that we could possibly share. Do you, do you think anything like that would be feasible? His only concern was during the day would be to have a separation with students and public, which I totally understand.
I have heard of that, actually. When I was in university for my masters, one of my colleagues, they actually worked in a, a combination public and school library. The library was attached to the school building, and they did technically have two separate, like, sections. So it is possible, especially for a smaller community. My, my biggest concern with that, though, is just from general conversation with the high school librarian here in, at the school. One person can't run a library comfortably like that.
No, no, I understand that. I understand that the town would have staff involved, plus the school.
Yes. But I, I, I do think that that could be a possibility, yes.
I feel like our library is a, is a very important asset to the community. I feel like that your adults that are checking out those, your children's programs that are phenomenal, and I just, I just don't believe we're doing it very efficiently. And I don't mean that from you as staff at all. I'm talking about the kind of, complex, square footage and things like that, that, that we could do a better job, more efficiently, and, and get those meeting rooms and things that, that the people need.
I personally, I, I, again, I've only been here for three years. I don't, I'm not attached to the history of this place. I'm not originally from here. In case anyone didn't know that, I'm originally from Kansas. I came here for the work. But from what I've seen, we, our library, it's functioning, but it's not thriving. And I think there's a lot more we could potentially do, whether it be with a new facility or with a upgraded version of the same one that we currently have.
Here's something to note. Just two nights ago, in the same room, the school was talking about the VOTAC thing. And this conversation came up as they were building the dome, but the school has to consider some significant upgrades in the next 10 to 15 years, such as a new high school, elementary school, because our, our children-age classrooms are just exploding with population. And so it may be smart to, to start a dual conversation that, all right, listen, if you're going to build a new high school, what about this? And a, a big, big thing we've seen, we do, we do a lot of capital campaigns for YMCA's, and because they are quite antiquated now, kind of, you know, they're going to the path of a library where they're just not as important as they used to be with all fitness centers. So what they're doing is they're partnering with, in fact, we did three in just the last few years. A YMCA will partner with a, say, Integris or another health organization, and that hospital puts their rehab center in the YMCA, and it's a partnership. So they gain an enormous amount of money that they don't have to cough up, and they get dual-purpose, you know, buildings and things like that. So there's just a lot to consider before you start nailing, driving nails at anything.
Right.
That you openly talk about this. I know it's, it's really, really hard to consider something like that, that amazing building, but wow, it's, 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 it's a whole, it's a, it's, it takes a lot of money to run it.
Anything else? Questions or comments?
So a quick solution on your ramp, just throwing this out there, because I just had a conversation with somebody local that needed ramps. They make a metal ramp that you can use for any adjustments. You can make them as long as you need to or as short as you need to. So maybe that could be something to consider, instead of laying cement and whatever, maybe putting a metal ramp in one of the doors to make it handicap accessible. And then that ramp, when, say, we do build and we don't need it no longer, you can remove that ramp and maybe use it for another area or something in that sort. And Jimmy Birkenbaum is the one I was talking to, because we were talking about a resident here in town. They go and they build these metal or these wood ramps, and they cannot reuse them because it's made to fit a certain person's house. So he was actually looking into metal ramps, in which I didn't think about it, but my uncle had one on his house. And then, so that's maybe something to consider, because you can get them certainly to make them less steep or whatever, if the, if that's something to consider as a quick fix for a handicap ramp.
Are we okay in the front with ADA?
Aside from not having an automatic door at the front? Yes, we have a ramp that is wheelchair-accessible.
That's all compliant, yeah.
Yep.
I thought, I thought so, but I just wanted to double check.
Yes, Mary got that fixed.
And I full well know what you're talking about on that east door with that ramp.
Yeah. And just as I note, the second page that I submitted, that is just a list of what I would say would be some minimum requirements. would say would be some minimum requirements to whether, no matter what ends up happening, what a library would need to probably function properly, and/or some just kind of wish lists that May and Ms. Jenny have, like, noticed, um, that we would, that we feel like would be beneficial for our space, but it doesn't matter which, which way the town decides to go, it's just for your information.
I'd like to make some comments. I, on this putting all the city buildings and services in one location, I really don't understand that. I, I think the town hall building on Main Street is very convenient. It can handle that. Uh, the police department needs a bigger building, so more space, I understand that. But just the rationale, just the rationale saying we want everything in one place, I don't see the benefit there. The, the other thing I'd like to say is, because it seems to me, since I've been watching the town council as a private citizen, when I moved back in 2013, and up until now, I think there's a lot of statements made without a budget. The tower at Pat Hennessy Park, how much does it cost to fix that? Do we have a real estimate of how much would it cost? Jack, you said the library costs millions and millions and millions of dollars. I'd like to see where you're getting your figures from.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, I look at some of the items we're requesting, especially for the police department and the water department, we can't even do those. We can't buy some very basic inexpensive things. How much does it cost to tear down that library? How much does it cost to build a super building with everything in there? I'd like to see a budget. I'd like to see some real figures. My position is unchanged, Bert, and I said it strongly in the town council meeting. There's enough money to run that library, to maintain that building, and to gift my wife and I set up in 2008, fourteen years ago. If you want to tear down the library, that's fine. That money goes to Oklahoma State University.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'm not changing my, not budgeting one quarter of an inch on that.
Yeah. I think the, I think the thing to think about there, Richard, is, is when that money becomes available and the fact that it's gotta be matched, and I don't know that we're gonna be able to get by with that building that long.
The way I look at it, how long has the built, town taken over? We're rehashing this what we had in the town council meeting. How long has the town had ownership of that building, the high school building?
Hmm, nineteen eighty-three?
No, it was eighty-four when they built the, the high school, so.
Their-
Elementary school, eighty-four.
To me, the high school building is like the tower at Pat Hennessy Park. Nothing was done all these years. No grants were pursued, no initiative started. The tower at the Pat Hennessy Park deteriorated, and now, now we come in and say, it costs all this money. What we're talking about is deferred maintenance.
Well, no, we've been maintaining, we got a REAP grant because we did the bathrooms in it, and then we've also replaced the windows, so I mean, we have been doing-
Well, I recognize, I recognize the problems in the building. It needs new wiring throughout, it needs a sprinkler system. You're gonna put those things in a new building, or you're gonna tear down the library and and, and size it. I, I agree, the library is very large as it needs to be, but I've, I've stayed in my position. Make your decision, I'm fine with it. I'd like to help Hennessy because Hennessy doesn't have the resources. That's why my wife and I in 2008 set up this fund, and, uh, that was fourteen years ago. My wife's not around for me to ask, can we change it? So that's my position.
Well, I, I don't foresee anything happening until the pool's paid off, which is how much longer it took you?
I think we'll have it paid off in about seven or eight years.
Five more years?
Seven or eight.
And that's, one of the things about this meeting today is not to making decisions on anything. It's like you said, there's, there's very few dollar amounts listed in here. These are projections, these are what the department sees, these are our priorities. This is when we think these things can be, you know, need to be updated before it quits on us and things like that. So this is just to, for everybody to be able to see what all of the issues are, what all the problems are. And yeah, budgets, you know, cost estimates, all of that's got to come into play before the board can make any decisions on anything. And unfortunately, like we've been saying, a cost estimate today may not be good in six months, let alone three years or even a year. So, um, so that's one thing, is that there's not a decision that's going to be made today. It's just to help everybody see, these are everything that we have going on. What is our priority? Where do we, where do we have money? Where can we get grants? Where can we find funding to, to, to help take care of these issues? Um, and then improve our community, because, you know, like I stated earlier, you have a lot of really good things going for Hennessy, and you need to capitalize on those and improve what needs to be improved upon. So, um, yeah, there's, there's some communities that love having all of their municipal things in one location. You know, like Bert said, insurance is a big concern on that, but you can't make those decisions until you know what all the costs are going to be involved, not just constructing it, but then what are you gonna use the old facility for? You know, what, what is the cost going to be to keep the old facility functioning? And it's an overall cost. It's not gonna be just one department or another. To be able to do a complex, you've got to look at what all the costs are going to be. Sometimes it is cheaper to keep your other facilities and upgrade them than to build a new one. Sometimes it's not. It just depends on what your costs are, you know, how much needs to be done and how expensive those items are. But you do need to keep what facilities you have in best condition that you can, so that you have something to be proud of, so.
Bert, what I can do, there were two gifts specified in 2008. Half of it went to the library, half went to community development in, within the town of Hennessy. I'm having Vincent Mises update, he's rewriting the trust, but what I can do is remove the matching requirement, take that money that went for community bill and put it all into the library. Basically, that way, I think, I don't know, if they change the capital gains taxes, the inheritance taxes, all that's unknown, don't know what the economy is, but I think that would be about three million dollars for the library. The Community Foundation of Oklahoma gets about a five percent return, just like the Cherokee Strip Community Foundation. So that would be a hundred fifty thousand a year. Otherwise, it goes to Oklahoma State University.
Right.
That building is torn down.
Right. Well, I think, and like Vicki said, we're not really gonna make any decisions today at all, we're just planning for what's out there ahead of us, but, um-
You must look at that building. You could do several things with it. That area behind the stage, uh, would make a magnificent display area. You could have, Bert, I've been at the quilt museum in La Grange, Texas, and the quilt museum in Paducah, Kentucky. The Paducah, Kentucky quilt museum draws people from around the world, all states. So you could have displays down there. The auditorium could be the history center. A lot of people can't walk up two, two flights of stairs, but of course, we can put elevators in there. And, uh, the view of that building must be, this, you've got this magnificent space, what do we do with it?
Right.
And, uh, again, I repeat, can't, we can't even maintain the tower at Pat Hennessy Park. How are we gonna tear, you don't even have money to tear down the library, Jack. I don't know how much dynamite costs and that sort of thing. How much? Just don't put it under my chair.
It wouldn't take very much if you think it would.
Don't put that dynamite under my chair.
Well, I don't think that we're saying we want either way or, you know, either which way tonight or today. I'm already thinking of tonight. Um, but I think that we know that we've got to, that something's gonna have to happen, you know, we've got to plan, start looking at the library has to, we've got to plan, you know, in looking at the five to ten years, something's gonna have to be done with the library, whether it's remodel or, you know. So we're not gonna be looking at like fifteen, we're gonna have to look in that five to ten year range that we're gonna have to look at doing something with the library.
And I, I totally agree with what she said, Richard, that there needs to be a budget. We need an expert, we need engineers or an architect to look at it and say, here's what it needs, because we all know it needs wiring, we all know it needs a fire system. But to find out exactly what all it does need and estimate the costs, you know, so that we kinda know what we're dealing with.
We need actual figures.
Yeah.
We need actual figures.
Yeah, yeah. And it's like Vicki said earlier, too, the problem with that is, whatever costs we get today, you're probably not gonna do anything for ten years at least, you know, and those costs may, but it would give us an idea of which direction.
And the cost would go up for new construction, and the cost would go up for demolition.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. But, uh-
Didn't, I'm sorry, didn't you allot some money to do that estimate thing at one of the meetings a while ago?
The cost was eight thousand dollars just to measure the building.
Oh, and kind of-
To create an as-built drawing.
Gotcha.
And that hit just when the COVID came on. And that was right at the time we were, if I recall correctly, if we didn't change the budget, we were running two hundred thousand dollars a year deficit, and that's when we abolished the public works position and a position at the library and-
Sure.
Cancelled service contracts, and then that wasn't enough, Tiffany had to go in and do some more work.
So is that money still available to do that?
So we didn't, so we didn't, yeah, I was agreeable that we don't measure the library. That's eight thousand dollars, and at that time it-
Right.
Things were so tight, we needed every cent we could get our hands on.
But this is stuff that we can start looking at implementing into the budget next, say, like, next year, or, you know, and stuff like that.
Yeah, because it's February, you're gonna be looking at next year's budget-
Yeah.
Next month.
Three months, two months?
Yeah, you know, and April's when, you know, you're really-
The managers are already starting on their budget, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, you know, and I think today is a great, a great event to have happen to where we can throw out ideas and different scenarios. I've learned a lot from you guys sitting out there and Tiffany. But Richard, I think it's good just to throw ideas out there, and we all know nothing's gonna happen. Well, I'm on the board for sure, because I've only got a year left. So, you know, but down the road to, to get to that point, maybe the town has an architect look at it and give ideas and suggestions and some kind of assistance.
We talked about it, and then things got a bit busy in December. Of course, now we have the planning thing, but you indicated that the architect had sort of helped out with the fire station drawings at either a lower cost or no cost or something, and you thought you could get him to look at the library. I'd like to follow up on that.
Yeah.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't talked with him about that specifically, but they did, they did do the preliminary stuff at the fire station. Everything that we've seen so far has been at the cost.
Bert, as you know, Bill and I were never agreed on anything, but one of the things that we agreed on was that the school always has something going on. They don't ever want us to know that we, you know, we're gonna be paying more or that we're gonna be paying less on our taxes, so as soon as one building, just like this one, is paid for, they start on another one. But the town has never done that.
Never done that.
We have just done like, oh, we've gotta have a raise because we're practically giving you your water or the sewer or whatever, and the town has never gone out and, and done these large projects that they need to do.
You're right, because I think it was, I think the last bond issue, if my memory serves me correctly, for the town was in nineteen sixty-three-
Yeah, it was before we came in.
That paid off in nineteen eighty-three for some storm drainage.
Yes.
A lot of storm drainage.
I know.
And at that point, the town should have come back in with another, another bond. The, the problem with bonds for the town is that only, unlike the school district, that it affects all the landowners in our district-
Right.
Only affects the folks in the city limits, so-
I understand.
It would make property taxes, but you're right, the, the town should have followed suit with the school and kept something going, because now we need these things, and we're, we're behind. And I, I guarantee you, we're paying on that dome, and as soon as that's paid off, they're gonna have something.
They're already planning that.
And, and that's okay. I mean, so we wanna see this campus-
You know, the city only gets sales tax. I mean, that's the only thing besides water and sewer, you know, that's all we get besides water and sewer.
You don't get any state aid money, I know.
Yeah, all we get is sales tax money.
Right, yeah.
But if we go for a bond, then we get a little bit property tax, you know, ad verum, property tax. But to me, I would, if we're going after something, I would rather, and, and we've already, for the swimming pool, you know, we went and we raised a quarter, was it quarter cent?
Sales tax.
It was a quarter. Right.
Quarter cent sales tax. But to me, and we're, we're at nine point seven five, and I'd hate to go to ten, but if we went and we got a little bit more sales tax, then anybody who visited in town would help pay for these streets or pay for drainage or pay for anything instead of just the people in town.
Oh, no, I, I agree.
It depends on what we're going.
I don't know why you couldn't do both.
It depends on what we're going for, I would, I would think that we would need to look for.
I don't even know what our valuation rate is just inside the town limits.
I don't have any idea.
I mean, that's something that we would need to know so we could see.
And I, you know, barre back to what you said about the school, and, and once again, I won't be on this board when the pool pays off, but I think it'd be very wise of whoever is to put that sales tax right back for vote.
Sure.
It's not gonna increase your tax, but is going to keep this coming in for whatever the needs are at that time.
When does that expire, Tiffany? When does the pool pay it off?
Well, it was fifteen years since I was set up.
Fifteen years, but you can, you can pay it off early, and we, we're gonna have enough money in there to pay it off early at the early date.
So we need a plan by then. I mean, there's your deadline-
Right, yeah.
-to do on something, whatever it is you're gonna do.
And that, and, and that's why I've said, um-
You said it'd pay off maybe in seven?
Yes.
Seven to eight?
Yeah, in seven to eight more years.
We need a plan at year five.
That's why I said, maybe we could look at, you know, the library or if- the library or if everyone wanted a multiplex or something like that. Whatever the community wanted, what you could go for, because.
Well, and to, to go to the vote, to extend that sales tax, you've got to have a project for that money, or it won't pass, nobody's gonna vote, ah, y'all, let's keep it.
I don't know what it's gonna, but let's keep it. You've got to have, you've got to have a plan.
And so Bert's right, you need to have a much clearer plan five years from now of what you're wanting to do so that you can have that lined up and ready to be able to get that tax extended, and the people know exactly what they're voting on, exactly what it's gonna go for. That's just like the, the school bonds. You know what they're gonna spend it on, you know, they have to tell you if it's transportation, these are the buses, these are vehicles, if it's, you know, new facility, whatever. The schools utilize those bonds very well. Cities and towns can get the bonds, but a lot of them don't like to. And I've been at some town board meetings where the people serving didn't know they could get bonds because their town had never done it as far as they, they didn't know that was a funding option. But they like grants because you don't have to pay grants back, you know. But bonds, you can get a larger chunk, get a bigger project done, so.
Like in a small community like us, like instead of the school fixing the, they're wanting a new high school, like you said, well, good. So you, we need to get our plan out there before they get theirs out there. Because you ain't gonna vote, both of them ain't gonna pass at the same time.
Right, but the, the key on the sales tax is pushing, this is not a new tax. This is just continuing what we've already had. Look at what we did with it. You showcase what you did with that first sales tax money. This is great, this has generated X amount of income for this community, you know. There'll be some work on, on that. Tiffany, to put together, you know, how much income, you know, has been generated from that. And that's sales tax from people coming here and getting fuel, getting groceries, eating out, snack foods. You know, there's, you know, you need to make sure you have a way of tracking that, and you do. You have salaries of people working there, so, okay, because they've got jobs, then they're living here, they're buying groceries here, so it's, there's a domino effect on doing these things. And showcase what a great facility that is and what the income is that it has helped generate. And so the sales taxes helped provide additional police training or police vehicles or things like that. Associate it to some of these other things that shows the improvements that, just that one project has helped in other areas. But yes, you know, you now have a goal to, you know, in five years, you need to be looking down. If you don't have the plan in five years, you need to be nailing it down. What is the next project going to be? And if you can keep that momentum going, you know, that, that will help a lot, so. We do have one more section, and that is general, and I'll turn that over to this Tiffany.
We are working on completing the new directory window at town hall, it's on back order. Hopefully by year five, it'll be completed.
Our blankets aren't gonna last that long.
Handicapped accessible bathroom at town hall. We really need to, you know, we've been talking today a lot about handicap accessible, accessibility, so we need to, to do that. The downtown speaker system, we, we need to try to work on that and make that a little bit better. A lot of times we get a lot of static or a truck goes by and it breaks the.
Picks up the police calls.
Yeah.
Does it? Like entertaining.
Yeah. We need to replace the doors at the town gym, some of the single doors, it needs to, they need to be replaced. And then signage, you know, we've been talking about signage. The five to 10 years, we need to remodel the boardroom and make bigger. You know, just like today, we've had to come to the school. It would be nice to be able to utilize our own, our own facilities. Pavilion in the downtown area, I know this is gonna go kind of in what, and it would probably be like in parks, but we've been talking about building a pavilion down in the old lumberyard area. And then work on an entrance to the gym and storm shelter. I would like a whole new entrance area, try to revamp up that whole entrance area, so. That's all I had.
Anybody have any questions?
And did you have any comments or questions?
She was here for the live.
A lot of different things can fall under general government. Basically, anything that wasn't covered by the departments, that then falls under general government. We've mentioned several times about signage, you know, have cohesive signage around the community, what, you know, the parks and the, the entrances to your community. But some of the things you need to think about for all of the departments, what, what changes are happening either in Hennessy or in the area that could increase traffic flow, increase people coming here? It's like Tiffany and I were talking on the phone one day, there's an old boy scout camp or scout camp, I don't remember if it was, I think it was boy scouts, up in Garfield County. There's rumors of it being used for conference center, being able to hold conferences and things in there. What kind of impact might that have on Hennessy? You know, if it's not gonna supply, you know, restaurant cafeteria area, they need to go somewheres. Hennessy the closest town that would have a restaurant, you know, that could be some impact. And I always like to throw out, you never know what business is gonna show up two miles south of town. So you need to keep in mind what some of these things are, or even up north of town. You've talked about possibly expanding city limits north. What all is that going to entail? The water department, they've already mentioned, you know. You know, we need to look at, you know, being ready to put water lines up there. If, you know, we decide to do that, where are you gonna come up with that fund? And by the way, exactly what is happening north into town by the Dollar General, north of the Dollar General? What is that?
Yeah, I talked to you about, well, they're putting in new roads and stuff, but on the west side of the road, that Halle Truck Plaza that I talked to you on the phone about.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I didn't know if there was housing going in on the east side?
Businesses.
Just businesses, okay. So there again, you might be getting some new businesses there. What kind of employment are they looking at? Is it gonna be something that's going to be expanding? Do you have housing capacity for businesses to bring new employees here? You know, that's, that's been one of my crying points for at least five to 10 years now in all of Noda's eight counties, is we have small towns that have, you can, that have some new houses, and then they have bad housing, and there's very little in between. There's not been a lot of new construction in a lot of our areas, and the new construction is out of the price range of your general employees here. So we've been working with USDA rural development on a project with the Oklahoma Home Builders Association. One of our newest employees at Noda, Jessica Jansen. And Richard, I think you've maybe been at one of the meetings she was at.
Yeah, I came to the meeting.
Right, yes. About, the focus is more of infill, that vacant lots you have in your communities already, getting new homes built there. They're the moderate income, it's not your low-income housing, it's the moderate, it's the people in between there. The, you know, family of four, where, you know, both parents work and they need a little more space, a little nicer, but they can't afford a $450,000 house. You know, it's that 100, 150, 175,000 dollar range. That housing just isn't in most of our small rural communities. So this is a program we've been working on for about a year now. And it started out with just David Ritchie, who, he had Chisholm Creek Development in Enid. He's retired from that, but that man will never retire, he will always find something else to work on. But it's kind of been his passion, he was a home builder, it's his passion. He's got the Oklahoma Home Builders Association in, Oklahoma Municipal League is in on this. USDA rural development, they actually have gotten a mortgage company in to help with it. There's a lot, to get, to build a house through USDA rural development, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. And it's very difficult to get a contractor to qualify, and there's a lot of different things involved. So that's what David's been focusing on, is how to streamline that so it's easier for communities to be able, for individuals to be able to get a loan to buy a house or have a house built. And it can be used for purchasing existing houses, but we've kind of had a focus on, on the infill because all communities have two or three vacant lots on a block that, you know, a nice house could be there, but it needs to be sold and, you know. And you, it's, you can't find a developer. Hennessy might be able to, but it's hard to find a developer who will come in and build just 10 houses because it's not cost efficient. They want to be able to come in, put in a new tract, 40 houses. That's what your developers want to do, that's where they have the quicker turnaround on their money. So, but that's something to think about. What's your housing situation here in Hennessy?
The, to add to your comments, my memory is not as real good, but the financing at that Noda workshop on housing, I think that USDA program would loan the builder the money guaranteed. Generally, it's based on the purchasers.
Right.
But with the USDA, it's to the builder, and that money is guaranteed.
Right, yes.
So the builder is not at risk.
Exactly.
The builder is not at risk.
That's with some of the issues.
That's the great thing about that program. I will also add in Hennessy, I'm not gonna make a judgment on it, but I will describe the situation is, and that is, we have destroyed a lot of low-income housing, moderate-income housing for parking. We've done it at this school, the churches have done it. I'm not condemning the churches or the school for doing it, but I am saying our stock of moderate and low-income housing, lower-income housing has gone down in Hennessy. We do have a builder that's doing a small project by a 40-house subdivision standard, but those houses, I think, are running, what is it, Bert, 145,000 or something?
I'm guessing, but.
About 145,000.
Two 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're around 200, I think.
They're up to 200 now?
Yeah, one of the houses over there, Jay built, and one's 210, one's 190.
So there you go.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, that's a concern. But yes, one of the issues that they had was the builder, if they got in and started building the house under this USDA program, the guarantee, the loan was with the person buying the house. And if they backed out, then the home builder was stuck with a partially completed house or needed to go ahead and finish it, was not gonna get paid for it, it was up to them to get it sold. So a lot of home builders didn't want that, because that's, you know, speculative building, and they don't like doing that. If there's no guarantee, they will get paid. So with this program, the, the builder will get paid regardless, and they don't, you know, the, the house gets finished, and so. Anyway, I wanted to mention that because that goes back again to quality of life. How good a housing do you have available for any businesses coming in or expanding? You need to, and that's kind of one of those two-sided swords, you know. You want more businesses, you want new employees, more people moving in, but if you don't have somewhere for them to live, then they're not gonna come, and your businesses aren't gonna come if they know there's not adequate housing for the jobs that they may be creating. So that's where you've got to, and that's like everything else that we've talked about today. Your water and sewer is connected to your streets, and it's, you know, fire and police protection. All of these things are connected together, so you have to look at these things as a whole.
So have they started working, have they started doing those houses?
Not yet, there's still some, they're looking at, Oklahoma Municipal League is wanting to get a database put online where the available lots, that's the first thing, is get the lots listed that's for sale. And it's individual landowners. Some communities have condemned houses and, you know, torn down houses, and then the city is left holding the property. They can list those on that website for whatever price they want. Individuals, if you own three vacant lots in town and you decide, yeah, I can sell those, you set the price to what you want to sell it for, and you can list it on that website, and that price, the only thing that they require when you list it is the price you set. When you list it, it stays at that price. You don't go up on it, because David, as a home builder, would run into that. He would, you know, see some lots and he would go to buy them, they'd find out that was a developer buying them. All of a sudden, instead of wanting, you know, 2,000, they want 6,000 per lot, you know. So that's where, if they think there's free money or government money involved, all of a sudden the price of the property goes up, because they're like, oh, I can get more out of it. So that's one of their caveats, that the price will stay at that for at least a year while it's listed on there. Yeah, Oklahoma Municipal League, OML, they're wanting to take this program statewide. And we're kind of like, let's get it regional first. You know, let's get some of those kinks worked out before you throw it out to everybody. But I believe it's Cushing?
Cushing.
Yeah, Cushing has been working on doing this program. And I'm not sure, last time I talked to David, because I'm not directly involved in the program, it was last fall, and they had not started the construction yet on the houses, but they were getting close to being able to do that. So it's something, as everything gets a little more in place, you will be hearing more about it. We will be pushing it a lot harder. But Jessica has been going around to the communities and talking to them and helping them understand that, what we call the inventory of available lots, and, you know, what the communities can do to help promote it and get their towns on that list, so.
Vicki?
Yes.
I have a list for the, I made of myself a list of reminders.
Oh, okay, all right.
And I've got moderate-income housing on it.
All right.
Because I feel like we need to get the, the pre-airboards.
Yeah.
We've attracted business, we've grown, but we don't have the housing.
Exactly, and, and that's, that's a concern, that's an issue, being able to provide good. And, and that's, that's a concern, that's an issue, being able to provide good housing. There are some houses out there, but they haven't been updated and remodeled. And to quote one of my board members, she made the comment that got a pretty big laugh, the baby boomers aren't dying off like they used to. Their houses aren't for sale. And one of the other board members quickly pointed out to her that she's in that category. She is a baby boomer herself, so. But it is true, you know, we are living longer, and we're going to stay in our homes longer. And so, but I also know some communities that are getting some retirement complexes built. And some of them are, you know, five to 10 units, starting out fairly small. But for people to be able to downsize and move in there, that frees up their family home for somebody else to buy, to be able to remodel, upgrade, things like that. And that makes it more affordable. It's easier to upgrade an existing house than to build a new one, most of the times. I've seen some houses that, you know, just bulldoze it and start over. But in general, most of your houses, you know, especially if they're built back in the, you know, 60s and 70s, you can do some updates and they're in good condition.
To pick up on your statement on your residential, that it's cheaper to update than to build new, that also applies for commercial and older, non-residential buildings too.
It, it can, yes.
You cannot assume, just because it's old, it's going to cost millions and millions and millions of dollars more.
Yeah, yeah.
Jack, I'm going to argue with you.
We can wrestle later.
Yeah, I agree, guys. Okay, are there any other questions or comments, thoughts, about what we've talked about today? Do you have any?
My comment is that 22 years ago, when we first started Hennessy 2010, we started this organization in 2000 to decide where we would be in 2010 and what we had accomplished. And after 2010, we renamed it Hennessy United, because we thought, what are we going to do? Then we're going to go, well. And we had exactly the same conversation about housing. We even had, we had a housing committee.
I was on a housing committee. When I first came.
22 years ago. And we had, but at that time, we had 35 people in the community who came, and we broke down into different groups of what people were wanting to do. And so they would put in, you know, you'd go sit over there, because you want to do the festivals. Well, I was with the festival surprise. So, at any rate, I, I think it's ironic that we're still talking about the same things. And housing was a big one back then.
They still have nowhere to go to expand.
Where to what?
We still have nowhere to expand.
I know, you've got to, I know.
Nobody wants to sell land. And we're very blessed to have what's going on at board, because we're getting some sales tax generating businesses up there.
But also, I think in order to, to get that ball rolling, to expand, you've got to start talking about expanding your infrastructure.
Yes.
Yes, you do, because there's, there's a cost to that.
You know, it's not the swimming pool that everybody's going to go yay, but if you want to drive down your street or you want to turn on the water or flush your toilet, hello, you're dealing with the town of Hennessy.
Yeah. That's true, yeah.
I'd like to give one example. You know, we, we, first of all, I, I think it's been very good. Today's been very good. You know, we have our town council meeting, we can't have, we can't discuss this, what we've discussed here at a town council meeting, and we go two hours and we're worn out already for arguing. But anyway, the example I like to give, we've got all these projects, and you think, how in the world are we going to do these? And how it will ever come to fructation. But I always point to Bert. Bert saved an area of the cemetery with the hopes of someday having a chapel. And I don't know how long you were saving those lots, Bert.
Quite a while.
Pardon?
Quite a while.
20 years?
Probably 15 at least.
Yeah. And we got, we got the chapel. So you look at Oklahoma City and all the things they've been doing, but that wasn't an overnight thing. It's, it's, I don't know when they started that, but 1980 or something like that, I think. So I, I think this has been very beneficial. We've had our meetings, and Tiffany, pick up on what you said in our last meeting. You know, we have a meeting, we talk about this piece, and we talk about this piece, and this piece, and it's all destroying it. Today, it's all together. It's all together.
I'm impressed with all these people.
I agree, absolutely.
And it just fits together so much easier than I might, and how did we set priorities? That's the big question now.
You know, I think, and, and I guess one of the next things on our agenda is where do we go from here, which we're kind of already talking about, but I think we should do this annually at least, to come back a year from now, talk about the things we talked about today. What of those things did we get accomplished? And what new needs are we looking at that are out there? And it wouldn't have to be a five, six-hour meeting maybe. But like you said, Richard, these are things that when we're in a board meeting, we're, we're trying to get through a specific agenda. And when we're in here, we're, we're able to go more in-depth. And I, I, I am less tired right now after sitting here for the last five and a half hours than I am sitting an hour and a half town board meeting.
I think you're absolutely correct on that. I agree with that. I agree.
And, and, and one of the things, if you do decide to do this annually, one key thing to have your departments give you is what has been accomplished in the past year. You know, which of the things on their list can they mark off as, we've got that done now? Because it's important to be able to focus on that and see, okay, we were able to work through, hey, we got through more things than we thought, so this can be now moved up. Instead, in the five to 10-year, I think we can maybe hit that at year four or five. So that's important to look at, you know, because you've got to be able to look at, say, what did we get accomplished? If you didn't get much accomplished, why did you not get accomplished? What happened? If you have done this meeting in spring of 2019, come spring of '21, you would say, why didn't we accomplish? We had COVID. That threw a monkey wrench into every single thing we had planned. So it's important to, you know, not just look at what we got accomplished. If we didn't get some things done, why didn't we? You know, what happened? You know, what, what caused that? There's, you know, bad things happen all the time in communities. You have a big fire downtown that takes out half of your businesses. You know, that's a horrible thing, but it's happened in some of our smaller communities, and it happens in the big cities too. So you need to be able to look at what you did accomplish in this past year.
I think, I think, you know, we have this list today, and it's a very good list. And, and I appreciate all the work that went in, and it's kind of, it's kind of overwhelming. And it's kind of negative. You'd say, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, got to do that, how in the world are we going to do this? But if we had a list of positives, I would start with the water park. And Wolford Park, I think for a small town is probably one of the prettiest parks for a small town in, around, you know, western Oklahoma. And the, the things that we do have, the Boy Scout cabin, we have a lot of positives. The dome, and that dome was a huge project. So we say, we've done, this little town did these huge projects.
Right.
We can do the things that are on this list. We're not going to do them in three or four years, probably 30 or 40 years, but we'll get it done.
But you do have.
See, I don't look at these as negatives.
It, it's nega, when I said that, it's kind of overwhelming, because when you look at these things and start putting a price on there, people say, well, we can't, can't do this, you know, we can't. That's what, I think, I would put this list on the town board side and, and get people to start thinking about it. When the sales tax runs out, let's start thinking, what are we going to do? If we renew that quarter cent tax, what are we going to do with it?
And I think you also, when you're getting to that point, is list how much money that quarter cent sales tax brought in. You know, put the dollar amount there, you know, this quarter sales tax brought in X amount per year, or as a total, you know, 1.3 million, or whatever it is. So people say, wow, we can do a lot with that. You know, then these are, you know, these are things that we, we need to focus on then. Because you don't think about it, you know, quarter cent here and there and stuff. And get the big picture number and see how much sales tax money that actually brought in. And then you can, it can help you realize it will be easier to us to get these changes made in, you know, two years, rather than eight years like we thought it was going to take, things like that, so.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say I was negative, I acted wrong, choice of words. I didn't say it correctly.
But, but yeah, you need to, you know, accentuate all your positives and then work on improving your, your negatives. Your, your, and a lot of it is your basic maintenance and operations. If you don't maintain your water lines, you're going to have issues. You don't maintain your sewer lines, you're going to have issues. And they just naturally deteriorate and break down. So that's some of your basic maintenance that you need to get ahead on. Instead of always reacting to it, be proactive and say, we know these water lines in this section of town. You know, we know what year they were put in, they're reaching into their life expectancy. Are we at that point where we can replace them before we start having a lot of breakages and, and issues? That's where every community, that should be their goal for their water and sewer, all their infrastructure is. Okay, we know this section of town has pipes that are 60 years old. We need to start thinking about how we, how can we afford to replace those.
Well, and I think too, having lists like that helps us know that we've got to put those into the budget and to put those on the list of things to get done this year and to, and it's kind of like reminders, because if they're not there, those reminders are not there a lot of times, they're not going to get done. Sometimes there's reminders, it still didn't happen. Well, that's true, but most of the time.
But we'll take an exception on the last two years, thanks to COVID. You know, that's, like I said, that, that's been a monkey wrench for so many people and entities and families and lives, so. But you need, but when you have this plan and you can focus, okay, we got setback for whatever, but we know where we're at, and we can, you know, we'll do what's absolutely necessary, and then we'll get to where we can be ahead of that. But, you know, your streets, the ones that are on the 10 to 15-year list, you have a couple of ice storms, and guess what? They now jump up sooner, because we all know what happens when you get ice on, on your Chippewa roads. And so, you know, it's things like that. You have a couple of mild winters, and it's like, hey, all right, they're going to last a little bit longer, but we still need to take care of them. We know that they're getting in bad shape, so we still need to plan to go ahead and, and address these streets, so. Anyway, Bert, what's next on the agenda?
Before we go from here, I think we've kind of covered.
I think so.
Some citizens' comments. Anybody got anything?
Anne's here now.
Anne's here.
No comments, I'm just listening.
Anybody else? Councilperson remarks. I just want to say thank you, Vicki, very much for coming and doing this.
It's my pleasure.
You're, you've given a lot of insight to a lot of things. And I also, everybody on that back table, thank you so, so much. You all have spent a lot of time preparing these lists and researching to present to us. I've learned things I did not know, and thanks to you all, and things that we need to know. So thank you all so much for your time and for being here on a Saturday. I know there's 100 other places you'd rather be on a Saturday morning afternoon. Carol, do you have anything?
I want to thank you guys for taking the time out and doing what you guys did, the hours you put in, giving us these plans. Even, you know, all of us have our own ideas, how we'd like to see the city go, and we split forward. You know, a lot of this reality is going to hit us once we leave here as board members, that what we can't afford and what we can do, you know, what we'd like to do, you know? You know, Ed, thank you for your time. I know you've got some more important decisions to make. But, you know, just the, like, it'd be nice to have one, all one building, yes, you know? But prior to a pipe dream in the future that we'll probably never see, it's probably one of the things that we got to maintain, what we got, and, and work with what we got. You know, we can't, you know, we got a couple of projects, you know, we're talking about housing and all that, but, you know, we want to grow, but we got a couple of projects up there north of town that we got to say, we're, we're going to come up with the money for that, you know? You know, so that's our first solution, you know? Tiffany's got a job to get this all in the budget. So, you know, so this is probably taking out her time and, and trying to concentrate on that too. So, you know, next week, she's going to have to show us where we're going to get the money for them projects, you know? So she's going to be working overtime, it looks like. So guys, again, just thank you for showing up today and taking your time out for doing it, so.
Richard, you got anything?
Well, I think the group has been marvelous. For me, it's put all the, took all the broken puzzle pieces off the floor and put it on my table and arranged it for me. And I can see the picture, I didn't have that view before. And I want to thank Vicki for coming here. I think you had a calming effect and directed it. I'll have probably more questions about that historical.
Okay.
Thing, grant that you mentioned. When you said $750,000 by, you know, I was holding on to my chair here.
There's a process to go through before you get there, but yes, it's something to start working on now.
And I'd like to thank Tiffany. I've thrown out a lot of stuff the past couple of years before as a private citizen, and I think you pushed a lot of things. You pushed us to Oklahoma City, to the Municipal League meeting, annual meeting, and I think that was a great benefit, and you organized this today for us. And I know there had to be a lot of effort put into that. And you've gotten us three grants for $265,000, over a quarter million dollars on that. So thank you, Tiffany.
I want to get and say thank you to our workers. I like how they work together, and when something comes up, they don't say, it's not my job. That they get it done, and I'm really proud to call you our staff, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And Tiffany too, I don't believe.
No, when I said back table, you're very much included.
I couldn't do my job without them.
It's all together, and you can see how much we've come in this short period of time. Because, and during COVID, we could have been in a really sad shape, but we came through, I, in my opinion, very well through this, so. And that's because of your all's hard work, so thank you.
I heard you made a pretty good secretary, Cliff.
All I can do is answer the telephone, let me tell you.
He did very good, he did not even fire him.
Thank you for him and David.
We probably have to do hard work.
And good luck. Go out and vote Tuesday. Go out and vote Tuesday.
Yes. Don't forget to go vote.
Vote on the eighth, that's right.
Well, I will make an motion to adjourn. I will second that. Earl, call.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
No, thank you and no. I'm enjoying myself today.
You want to stay longer?